...of the Jackson City Council, June the 25th, 2015 to order. And I'm gonna lead us in our invocation and pledge, if you would, please rise. Father, we've come before you this morning just thanking you for this day. Thank you for giving us the breath of life, Father, as we awoke. Father, we thank you for all the many ways that you've blessed our city, Father, and we ask those continued blessings upon it. Father, you are indeed a great God, and I thank you for this council, Father, that you have placed in the position that they now hold. Your word says that they ordained by you to serve in this position, Father, that is indeed a high calling. And as we transact the business of the city, Father, we just pray for wisdom, for strength, and for discernment. Father, again, we thank you for all the many ways that you've blessed us, and as we meet today and as we leave here, may everything we do, everything we say, bring honor and glory to you, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Pledge and lead us to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Nada, I think you can show all council members present, and, um...
Lady Flitz is not present yet.
Yep, we hope she'll be here. Item four, let me take a public comment, and everyone has a copy of the agenda. Anyone that has any comments on any item under new business, feel let me know, I'll be happy to call on you. Item five is new business, and Al, we're turned over to you on item one, a resolution authorizing incurrence of indebtedness not to exceed seventeen point four million.
This is gonna be a two-part...well, there's two resolutions involved. The first resolution, called the initial resolution, basically tells us the what portion, what we're asking for, and why. The second portion is the loan resolution, which basically tells us how, proposes how, if you so approve. And I do have Mr. Tommy Green here from the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund, and when we get to the loan resolution part, I'll ask him to come up in case you've got any questions as to how the bond fund works. We have had two loans with them recently, a ten million dollar fixed rate, and then two years ago, a fifteen point three million dollar variable rate. Just wanna make sure the minutes show that we did put out a public notice to comply with all the regulations that basically tells that we're going to be addressing four items, two resolutions on indebtedness, our authorization to proceed, and the regular two on the budget itself, and the tax rate that is proposed. So if no one has any questions, we'll proceed accordingly. As I stated, and you should all have a copy of this, I made sure you had one soft copy and put one in your boxes, so that hopefully is no one missing any part of what I'm gonna show here. But the initial resolution is authorizing the incurredness of indebtedness by the city of Jackson not to exceed seventeen point four million. And the crux of this initial resolution, which the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund really helped me with, or did, down in section one, it tells in the verbiage what the monies are going to be used for. And sometimes a picture or a chart is worth more than just the verbiage, so let me proceed to put up our little chart here, in which we can address questions. We're talking about borrowing money for three years, and the reason we're really doing the three years is so we don't have to keep coming back each year when we know we're gonna have road construction at X amount, and departmental capital at Y amount, and the other items for the departments. It just seemed redundant to only borrow for one year and then have to come back again and again. So this is a three-year capital coverage, and we'll go through the details with the individual department heads. The one thing I wanna stress about this is what we're proposing, and I'll let Mr. Green explain that when he comes up, but when we borrow seventeen point four million, it's really a line of credit, like you might have with your local bank, and we don't intend to draw down seventeen point four million. We basically look at drawing down about five seven, five eight, over the three years, and we won't even borrow, take that down, or draw that down, all at once. Depending upon how Scott in engineering sets up his contracts for paving, you know, we may only take down a million in the first three or four months, and then as needed, we will draw down the other items. That way, we're not paying interest, it's just money there available for us, it's what I would call a line of credit. Anybody have any questions about our intentions here? You can see the resurfacing and department capital appears over and over again, because that's the crux of our borrowing. We've only identified the exception items, like the fire truck, or Cypress Gardens classroom, police cars, things of that nature, and they're not repetitive. You can see the fire truck is in this year, police cars are more heavily in next year, FY-17.
Al, before you continue, let's make the council aware of one thing, that loan amount over a three-year period is seventeen point four million, and during that, during that three-year period, the city, the city would be in a position, and will be in a position, and will lower its bonded indebtedness by the same amount over a three-year period, because the way the debt is structured now, at the end of three years, we will have paid down our bonded indebtedness by roughly seventeen point four over this period of time. We'll let Mr. Green, when he comes up, mention the interest rate on this is variable rate. We have some in fix, some in variable, which I think is probably prudent at this particular time, and he can give you the estimated percentage rate of roughly, I hope it's still right at one percent interest rate on this loan. And when you consider the fund balance we have, which is invested at a, also with a, who's invested with the investment...
Bancor South.
Bancor South, and...
And, of course, the normal state bank account that Karen uses.
Yeah, we're getting close to one percent interest on the fund balance, so really, when you look at the amount earned on interest on our fund balance, and amount of interest being paid out, there's only a small difference in those two numbers. Go ahead.
Just to highlight what the mayor said...
Just a second, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you one hundred percent. Mr. LaFoome, good morning.
Yes, good morning.
When you spell those other items out for FY-16, 17, and 18...
Yes.
With respect to the parks, you got Bemis Park, four hundred thousand FY-16. Do you know as of yet FY-17, FY-18 parks, you just got parks, half a million dollars? Or is that...
It's, I don't think we identified the exact parks.
It's a continuing effort to upgrade our park system in our city, though there'll be some work done, obviously, at some basketball court resurfacing at Forest Hills Park, and some other improvements there. We have to make some improvements at Conger Park, especially in the tennis court area, and we still have, still want to have items at North Park with our soccer complex, and also our new tennis complex. So that, again, that's over a three-year period, and there're gonna be some other park improvements during that time.
So we just wait until the FY-17?
I'll have that much be brought back to you all on contract.
FY-18. And then I'll wait for my question on fund balance when we give it to the ballot.
We will get around to that. Just to reiterate what the mayor was saying, you can see right here, the combined principle on our loans, which are roughly eighty percent fixed and twenty percent variable, but there's five five, five seven, five nine, almost the exact same numbers that we're talking about drawing down. So what the mayor is really basically saying, going back to my other chart, where we draw down five seven, we're really turning around and paying back in principle five seven. So the loan balance, and right now, we're sitting at seventy-two million, two forty-seven, and this is before you approve, hopefully, the seventeen point four spread over three years, but that's where we're at, seventy-two point two four seven million. That excludes the hospital note, which is a combined effort with the CRA, who they really ended up paying, and the HUD loan that we are guaranteeing, but we don't really pay that. It actually comes back through CDBG, and then the Sports Flex Capital Outlay Note. So it's really the general fund of the city. We are at seventy-two point two, which I know was one of the mayor's goals when he got here, was to maintain, not increase, the total debt owed, and you can see back here in FY-08, we had seventy-three, six ninety-three, you know, and that changes month by month, but basically, we're in the seventy-two, seventy-three range that we were in eight years ago when Mayor Gist came on board, and I believe, Mayor, that's been one of your goals.
May I indicate, now, the seventeen million, the biggest bulk of that is going to reconstruction of our streets. The last two winters on our city streets have been extremely harsh, and we have a lot of work to do in getting our internal infrastructure back up to par.
Al, that chart you showed us before this, from where you showed our debt service, does that include this new money, or was that...
No, I said it was before.
Okay. Could we get a copy of that? Or, not right now, when it comes down, next meeting?
Yes.
And do you have one of those worksheets incorporating the new budget yet that we can see?
I haven't put that down, because you haven't approved it, but it'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, okay, I'd like to see that one also.
Yes.
I don't know if everybody else would, but, okay.
Could you make that available to all of us?
I sure will. Okay, so the...
Excuse me, Al, I have a question, and it's kind of more of a policy matter, and I think it's appropriate, because we're gonna vote on the property tax rate later on this morning, this afternoon, and I don't know if you can give us this number quite this easily, but do you have an equivalent? We're considering borrowing seventeen point four million, do you have an equivalent of what property tax increase would equal that amount?
Well, we're not proposing any property tax increase.
I understand that.
But a penny of property tax is worth a hundred and fifty-four thousand. I don't have it in my head to divide out, but for every hundred and fifty-four thousand that we would want for debt service, we'd have to increase taxes a penny.
A penny? Could you get that number for me just later on, just to be able to make that comparison?
How many pennies we're talking about, yes? Okay, so I talked about the fact that we're at seventy-two point seven, and Randy, you're right, that's before we add the new proposal, so I will do a revised sheet here, which will include that, make copies available to Ernest and everyone, and I'll also make the FY-08 one available, so you can see that we, over the eight-year of Mayor Gist's term, have not increased, in fact, we've come down slightly. And this is not, hopefully, no questions, I didn't wanna interrupt anybody, but I did wanna, I came across something interesting in the Wall Street Journal, where municipal bonds are now becoming under more scrutiny. It talks about Bank of America, and JP Morgan, et cetera, and this article, there's two rating agencies, basically, S&amp;P and Moody's, and they have been criticized in the past for being too loose on their recommendations for ratings, et cetera. So they're coming down much harder, and where this article led, and we've all heard about Detroit going bankrupt, about the county, I believe it was mayor, around Birmingham that went bankrupt, several cities in Southern California, and this here, this article, and I'm no expert on this, but this was targeting Chicago, and when you take your debt service, like in our, in our situation here, is running about five eight to six million dollars a year, total principal and interest, and then you add to it the other major fixed portion of any city's expense, and that's the pension plan, assuming they have a pension plan and not 401K. You can see, and this article was targeted at President Obama's former chief of staff, Rahm Emanuel, or however you pronounce that, who is now the mayor of Chicago, and you can see that they're pushing forty-five percent of every dollar of revenue is going to pay debt or pension to their employees, which is a very serious situation. Basically, if you shut down, close down, like you would close down a business, you know, the debt doesn't go away, the pension plan would go away to some degree, depending upon the core of employees that you kept. But I took the liberty of getting the figures from Ms. Bell on what our pension plan is, and I think it's about six three, I'm looking around to find Karen, but anyway, you take that, plus the roughly six million dollars in bonds indebtedness we pay each year, we come out with about a twenty point three percent rate on our sixty-four million dollar revenue. So actually, we're sitting there with cities like San Antonio and Phoenix, and I realize that's comparing apples to oranges, we're sixty-some thousand, and these cities are many millions, but I think it does go to show that we're not in danger like some of the larger cities, and we don't intend to get in that position. I think our TCRS is running about eighteen point three percent, and then on police and fire, about twenty-one point five percent, and altogether, that comes out with our workforce to about six point three million. Just, it's trivia, but I thought it was interesting to see that probably the next city that's gonna be in trouble, just mathematically, is gonna be Chicago. Now...
So does that mean we're halfway there, or we're doing twice the scale as they are?
That doesn't mean we're halfway there. We talked about ratings, and everyone, I hope remembers, that our S&amp;P rating that we received a couple of years ago, what did I hit? Turn it upside down, and I'll get it right, brought us up to a double A, which we're very proud of. And this was from Standard and Poor's, and it notes there that we raised, they raised a long-term rating one notch to a double A from a double A minus, and you can see that it's based on our general obligation, outstanding debt, on full faith and credit pledge of our taxing process, and it should be noted that one of their sections dealt strictly with the debt, and it talks about the total government-funded debt service, let's see if I can't widen this down so we can get it all on here, being about sixty-eight points, six percent of total government funds, not just the general fund, and approximately seventy-two percent of it is paid or repaid in ten years. So ours isn't strung out like some cities for thirty or forty years, which gives you the ability, it's like getting a thirty-year mortgage versus getting a fifteen-year mortgage. A fifteen-year mortgage on your home is going to be much more productive for you, if you can afford to do that, because the principal comes down faster. And then they also comment about the annual pension and OPEC costs accounting for about ten percent of our governmental expenditures. So we did get a very good report, and we wanna keep that double A rating, and part of that, the major portion, is depending upon how we handle our debt. So the next thing we need to do, basically, before we get into the how portion, the loan agreement, we need to place on the table the initial resolution, which hopefully I have explained, the projects that it covers, that seventeen point four million, which is in verbiage here, and this is your authorization, if you so choose, authorizing us to proceed with incurring that indebtedness, and then we'll go into how we propose incurring. So I think, Mayor, we need a motion...
Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Have a motion to approve the resolution, and a second. Any questions as to this resolution have not been addressed? The only thing I'll say is that obviously, there's some, you've got your total amount listed there over a three-year period. Each one of those elements, once they're expended, will come back before council for approval of the contract, regardless of what element it falls under, so I want the council to remember that aspect of it. Any other comments from council? Council, please vote on the resolution.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor and one voting down.
Okay, if you would like to proceed, Tommy, would you mind coming up, and this is Tommy Green, who is, I'll let him give you his title.
He's the mayor of Alamo.
He's the mayor of Alamo. Thank you, council. I'm Tommy Green, I'm a marketing representative of TML Bond Fund, Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. We have, we have proposed a variable rate at your request. It's exactly the same loan resolution that you had two years ago, in which you have saved, and I haven't figured it exactly, but well over three hundred thousand dollars in interest cost from the two years of the fifteen point three being you had, because you're paying less than one percent. Now, based on the five-year average of SIFMA, which is the five largest banks in the United States, what their variable rate is, the five-year average rate is point one three, thirteen basis points. Today's rate, this week's rate, is eight basis points. If we do this, if we do this, and it's done today, or done this week, you will be paying ninety-eight basis points. On the five-year, past five-year average, you'd be paying one point oh three. It is a variable rate, can go up, can go down, it can't go down much, 'cause there's nowhere to go. It is a, it is a loan that can be, should rates start to increase, it can be converted to a fixed with a ninety-day rate, ninety-day negotiation. So it's not something you're gonna be locked into forever if you want out of. So far, it's been great for the last, well, since two thousand eight, saved cities a lot of money. The same provisions are the same, it's based on a draw basis, as Al said, this is your three-year capital budget, it can be taken out a year at a time for the three, it can be taken out on a monthly basis. You do not pay anything at all until you actually draw the money and get the money. You're not paying interest on anything at all. Al, and as Al said, it's kind of like a letter of credit, and it is, but we can't call it that anymore, but you don't, you don't actually get, pay anything on the money until you draw it. At the end of the three years, if you don't, if you don't draw it off, there's no, there's no penalty or anything, it just, it's turned back in if you're, if you're not gonna use it off. You can do it on a yearly basis, you can do it on a monthly basis, you can do it as you need, and draw the money out when you need it. We've got over four billion dollars in this same program in the state of Tennessee, so it's not, it's not a, it's not a new program, it's been there twenty-eight years, and we've got over four billion dollars on this program now.
Motion to approve the loan agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the loan agreement, and we've got a second?
Couple of questions before we...
Sure, go ahead.
You mentioned the eight, point eight three rate, and then one point oh three, I understand our basic rate's gonna be one point oh three percent?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And the other, if we did decide we want a fixed rate instead of a variable, what would the fixed rate be?
Fixed rate roughly now, you'd have to go to market with it, it'd be roughly between three seventy-five and three ninety.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions from council?
Just, Tommy was talking in terms of basis points, which I have trouble understanding sometimes myself, but I'll just give you, this is the last payment that Karen and I made on the fifteen point three million dollars, and we're still just paying interest, not any principal, but here you can see that the SIFMA basis point converted to percentages is point one one, and this is First Tennessee Bank, who actually was the winner of the bids.
This is right.
They serve as the conduit, so that Susan White doesn't have to go out and bid to banks, they do that portion of it. So First Tennessee is getting a whopping point seven five, the bond fund for administration is getting point one five, so that right now, last, and this changes month on, but we paid one point oh one, and the way you do that is you take fifteen point three million times to get this administrative charge, times point oh oh one five, divide that by the number of days in the year, and then multiply it by the number of days in this particular month, come out with that. So we are actually paying, Bank of New York Mellon, I believe...
That's right.
Who is the trustee, but the actual loan is held by First Tennessee, and I think they're very happy with us, they would like more of our money.
They are.
Our indebtedness.
Okay, we have, we do have a motion, a second, to approve the loan resolution. Any additional questions by council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, thank you, Tommy. Item two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with negotiations. We finished with that, Al, that part of it?
Yes, the only other thing I was gonna just show is over, this is the amortization schedule, and you can see that for the first three years, we are not paying any principal, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we are not paying any principal, but over the twenty-year period, you know, the loan is paid off, and we end up paying nineteen million, four seventy-six for the seventeen point four million.
One thing about that, Al, that, that, you won't be paying that much interest, that assumes that you're already drawing the whole debt down.
Yes.
You're just only be paying, it won't be, it won't be a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, but you're not gonna draw it off. That's the assumption that you have drawn it off from day one.
That's a very good point. We're taking it out month by month, quarter by quarter.
Right.
So this is a very worst case, where we just, we'd say, we're gonna take the whole thing out.
That's right.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Item two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to proceed with negotiations to acquire property for industrial park. Let me just indicate to council that we've had, been meeting several, several months with members of our economic development team in the city, in the county. We have two sites, almost three sites, under construction at our major industrial park, which is the airport industrial park. We have specific, which ended up on a site there... We have Pacific, uh, which, uh, ended up on a site there, I believe, I don't know how many acres. Mama, how many acres involved in the Pacific site, you remember? I think it was over a, over a hundred, I think. And then Kellogg's obviously, uh, went into a very large site in the construction of their distribution center, which, uh, I was out there yesterday. It's amazing how much, how quickly they're getting that building up. So there's some concern as far as the availability of, um, of property, which is available for continued expansion of our, um, of industry here in Jackson. So, um, in meeting with, uh, the chamber officials, the economic development team, they're, they're, uh, certainly recommending that we go ahead and proceed with trying to get some additional property on our inventory for industrial expansion. Uh, we don't want to certainly end up short if we have, if we have a, a potential client and then have to go out and negotiate for some sale of property for them to, to build on. So this is just to increase our inventory. Uh, if you'll remember, the Airport Industrial Park was totally paid for by the county, uh, bought by the county commission a number of years ago. And, uh, have, still have a few sites there, but many of them, many of those sites are really, uh, not sufficient in acreage to accept a larger type industry. So that concern was shared with me and I'm sharing it with council. Um, negotiations will continue and there may be nothing, uh, nothing brought back before the, the council for several, several months. And obviously, we're hopeful that, uh, this will, the, the two-point, um, two-point-four, whatever, will, will be used not only to purchase some property outright and get the deed in the hands of the city, but some will simply be options, hopefully five-year options that we'll purchase in order to be able to show that property to potential industrial clients. And, and the final analysis, we're hopeful that, that, um, uh, if we do need some of the property that's acquired through this, this particular authorization, that we'll be able to resell the property to those industrial clients. In some cases, uh, part of the incentive is to, to get the property, uh, donated by government units in order to land their industry here. But that, that is discussed initially in, in negotiations with the company. Uh, for example, I think Kellogg's bought their property, uh, that they're building their distribution center on. So, uh, there's always a, a good possibility that we'll be able to resell that property once, once negotiations are completed with, with any new potential industrial client. So that's basically the, the content of this resolution is recommended by the, the city attorneys, that we just simply get authorization from the council to stop, to begin negotiations. We have, uh, people out in the field, uh, beginning to, begin to look at several different sites. Some of them are out west and some of them are east of the city. All of them are within or can be annexed into the city, uh, because it's contiguous properties with existing city limits. If you remember, the General Assembly in their infinite wisdom, uh, said we could no longer annex by, by ordinance. We had to have a referendum, but it is authorized, um, if it's contiguous and in agreement with the adjoining property owner. So we, we, we're making ourselves aware of that particular part of the legislation. So this is basically what this resolution does, is authorize continued negotiations. And obviously, if anything is, is completed, negotiations completed, uh, that land purchase will be brought back to council for final approval. Who to approve?
Second.
Motion for approval and second discussion with council?
If we decide to do this, is this, will we draw off that loan for the?
No, it'll be, it's, we couldn't do that, the, the bond fund could not, could not process that in their loans. Some, I, I don't know, for some strange reason, Al, you may.
Well, I was going to go on.
But that's okay, that's where it'll come from, I guess is the question.
Well, we have already, uh, contacted the banks in the area because they're constantly wanting to loan us small amounts, not the type of money that, um, municipal bond fund handles. But, uh, we would be doing, uh, through Susan Wyatt and R F P. Uh, the complicated thing about this is you can see it authorizes, uh, the mayor to, um, take all steps reasonably necessary to negotiate with a third party. And then it comes down here and it says to submit an application for certificate of public purpose and necessity. And working with Jerry Spore, uh, of Spragans, Burnett, Cobb and Butler, uh, we found out that this, um, this is out of the T C A code, uh, for Building and Finance Committee Certification of Public Purpose and Necessity. This takes about two to three months to actually get approved. You know, once you get a project and it goes before a board and they determine whether or not, uh, this is feasible and meets all state requirements. So, uh, this would be bid out locally to local banks.
So the city would actually just borrow the money from local banks?
Yes.
This is not going to be I D V A money, this likes to be city money, but it'll pay for it.
And we probably, I know the mayor has talked about trying, if we would do this, there's a lot of ifs, pay it back in five years or something of that magnitude. Because in some cases, we might just be talking about options on land.
Exactly. Most of them will be an option, but we're, we're anticipating some direct purchase with, with the city receiving the deed. Most of it will be an option.
But it is a very complicated, uh, procedure. By no means do we just say, oh, we want this land for an industrial park and, and we bid it out. You got to go through the state.
The city, city solely is doing this, we're not doing this jointly with the county.
A city is solely doing this. I think the mayor said that in the past, uh, a couple of times, the county was the one who funded the industrial park plan.
Okay, do we, uh, um, we have a motion, a second, we do have a motion, a second. Any further discussion from council?
I just had a quick question, um, how did we come to two point three million?
That, that number was given to, uh, given to us by the economic development team that has been in some manner negotiations already, even though they're not anywhere near finalized the price, looking at the total number of acres to be acquired to add to an inventory. Uh, um, I mean, who knows, who knows where the price of property will go.
That was just their suggestion.
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor.
Any other, any other questions to come, this is council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item, uh, item six is first reading, and this is an ordinance. Consideration of ordinance for two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year operating in capital budget. So, Al?
Hopefully everyone has received a, uh, hardbound cover of the, uh, a total ordinance, uh, the total budget, I should say. This ordinance summarizes, and this was published in the, uh, in the Jackson Sun, we met the requirements there. And basically, we'll be going into detail, however much extent you want to, on these expenses as we go down one by one. But basically, we're looking at a, um, two percent increase in budget. Uh, the revenues match the expenses and basically, uh, don't want to get into everything right now, but you can see most of the increases are in the one to two percent or less than one percent as far as expenses. The large decrease here is basically because last year, uh, budget had the election expenses in it and appraisal, uh, costs that we received from Francis Hunley and the county over there. And that was in fourteen when the appraisal was finalized. And then we were, received our charges somewhat subsequent to that. But there won't be another formal appraisal, even though they work year to year, uh, with the comps and et cetera. But we won't see any more charges basically until around two thousand and nineteen. So that's why there's a sixteen percent decrease here. The twenty-one percent increase in administration, uh, basically contains the one point one million dollar cost of living, uh, three percent that we put in there until the council approves it or disapproves it. And then we spread it back, Karen will come back subsequently and spread it to all the departments. But there's no sense going through all those calculations on salaries and, uh, benefits, et cetera, uh, until it is approved. So it's stuck in the administrative portion here and it forces out a large percent. But that's basically what it's for and we'll, we'll get into that as we go. Any questions in general on the?
Just to clarify, Al, those are cost of living adjustments for the employees?
Yes.
Three point three, you said?
Three point zero.
Three point zero.
Right. Okay, and, uh, we talked about the two percent, uh, increase in revenues. And basically, of course, our property tax is, uh, roughly, it's, it's split eighty-twenty, going to eighty percent to the general fund, twenty percent to the debt service. But you can see that, uh, unfortunately, we only have about, let me try and get it down here, two point five-six percent increase in property tax. Uh, we do have some good increases in tax equivalents, which come mainly from J E A and their investments and their earnings. Uh, the local, uh, sales tax is showing up here only point nine, uh, compared to last year's budget. But when we go through in a little bit more detail, I can show you, we've had, um, several good months. Last month was, I believe, mayor, seven point seven percent increase. We're running at a cumulative five point four increase for the year. And I think the state's numbers are about three point five. So for the first time in a long time, we're actually running cumulatively ahead of the state on, on sales tax. We'll come down and, um, I guess, uh, address any of your questions, not I guess, but we will. You can see the federal grants, federal and straight, state grants are down, basically, uh, twenty-three point nine percent and fifty percent. Uh, the grants have basically dried up for police and fire. And I'm sure, uh, both Chief Weiser and, um, Maxie Stewart will address what grants we do have left. But they have, over the last five years, dried up significantly and we probably don't see any, uh, thing on the horizon that will change that. So the crux of the, uh, two percent increase is basically in the property tax, but it's not as much as we would like, uh, to see there. I mean, uh, before we get into the expense items, if there's no questions here.
We got one question, Rose, Al, on that third page, uh, you didn't stick that one up. We've got other reimbursements of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, uh, what, what is that?
Uh, the other reimbursements?
Right.
It's a conglomerate of, uh, things that we get reimbursed for, uh, some volunteer contributions. Uh, I'd have to get you the, the detail on that. If you're talking about the, the seventy thousand dollars?
Yeah, well, it jumped from seventy to two fifty-two, and that was what kind of threw me off a little bit.
Uh, in there, I included the, and Sam might have to help me on this, but it's roughly a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that we're getting.
School resource officers?
School resource officers, yes. So that's included, and then you'll see an offsetting expense in, uh, in Chief Weiser's, uh, expenses for those offices. And he can give you much more information as to how many and et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Al, on that, we'd be reimbursing the county?
We're getting.
That's our own?
We're getting reimbursed.
We're, okay.
We're receiving money in this case, right. One of the things, uh, that we look at each year is the infamous pie charts. And, uh, this basically shows.
You know, we never get the pie chart.
Yeah, I always have to have the pie charts. But a picture is sometimes worth a thousand words. Every dollar of property tax that we receive, uh, right now in F Y sixteen, you could round it and say twenty cents on the dollar is going to pay off debt and eighty cents is going towards the general fund to finance all of the services that we provide. It's down a little bit from last year, surprisingly, because I had, uh, overestimated some of the interest expense, uh, on the variable rate loan and that we ended up, excuse me, with some, uh, excess in fund balance that we were able to apply. Uh, the key thing you need to remember, and I don't believe I have the chart here, but back in oh eight, oh nine, uh, we had gotten up to something like thirty percent on the shaded area, which was almost, uh, going to put us in a situation like Chicago or some of those other cities because all our debt was bunched up front. And then we did a fifty-four million dollar refunding where we took several large loans and refunded it, uh, and spread that out. So it was in a, uh, it didn't, uh, violate any state requirements or anything. It just made it more reasonable. Uh, also, if you remember Frank Newdecker and myself and Randy, you may have been involved also, we set a policy, uh, and policies can be changed, but right now, we don't want this number to go above twenty-four percent because that's when we start getting in trouble, if we start taking twenty-four cents out of every tax dollar. And that reduces that, you know, to, uh, seventy-six cents then going to the general fund. Then we really start, uh, having problems because our revenues for the general fund go down. So our goal is to keep this in the twenty to twenty-one, twenty-two at the max percent. I might keep Tony awake. Man, I, could we do a little song and dance here or something? Man, Tony, that, that's.
Coffee, coffee.
Mayor's going to get more coffee now.
Well, well, that really hurts, Tony.
Hey, Al, when he gets in there, you yawn real big.
Maybe this one will excite you a little more. But this shows, uh, where our revenues and fund balances have come. This is moving, um, left to right. Uh, for two years, it was a little confusing because the state, uh, combined or allowed A T A to combine the, um, uh, Health and Sanitation Department, which has revenues of about twelve million dollars with the general fund. So it showed some, uh, revenues here that are sort of misleading because we really are, always have been in the sixty to sixty-four percent, depending upon the amount of grants. And our fund balance, which, uh, Mr. Buchanan always addresses, uh, has basically come down because in these years, we have, uh, expended more than we have taken in. In some cases, we've had, uh, in F Y eleven, I believe, and Stan, correct me if I'm wrong, was when we, um, I don't want to use the term bailed, but we helped get Lambeth, uh, out of receivership to the tune of about two million. And before that, we had, uh, purchased, uh, about one point three million dollars in homes in that area along with the hospital and others shared that expense. But there were some major expenses that have brought us down to right now a twenty-one million dollar fund balance, which is still very good, as noted in the S and P, uh, information. This is total.
Is that correct?
What's that?
It affects bond rating too, is that?
Yes, it does, very much so. Uh, twenty-one million dollars is our total fund balance. And as Sam likes to always remind me, there's three million dollars in reserves. So the unassigned fund balance is really eighteen million. And those reserves are primarily like one point one million for, um, the health reserve, for, uh, accidents and for health insurance. So these are total numbers. And just to give you a little idea where we've come from, if you think the twenty-one million dollars is scary, uh, this is a history going back to. this is a history going back to, you know, long before I came. But at points in time, we had been down because of tornadoes and floods and et cetera. We had been down as low as roughly five million dollars. And the key things that we, I'd like to point out here is that in two thousand and six is when we sold the landfill to, at the time, it was Allied B F I, and now it's Allied B F I Republic. We had an eight and a half million dollar gain there in cash that we received. Plus, we were able to write off reserves in the Health and Sanitation Fund for Metro Waste. If you remember, we did have an operation out there, Metro Race, Metro Waste, which was owned and run by Chuck Clark. And we had an agreement there where we had to buy him out or pay him off if we decided to stop the recycling and the baling. Well, in this case, we were fortunate enough to get Allied B F I not only to buy us out at eight and a half million for the landfill, but they also paid off three and a half million on that obligation. So we had a, a total increase, our gain of about eleven and a half million dollars. And we'll have to say, we've been living off of that basically since then. I, I put at the time, six million dollars in CDs and federal home loan bank instruments, which at the time, were drawing five, six percent interest. And that's no longer true. Now we're lucky to get one and a half percent, because we can only invest for three years. The next thing that I mentioned before was you come along here in two thousand and eleven is where we incurred some unusual expenses on the Lambeth situation, which have turned out to have a tremendous return on investment. But they did take our fund balance on a downward turn there. And we don't have any more landfills or anything to sell. So we've got to be very careful with our general fund balances. As Harvey said, that's one of the major measurements on our ratings from the bond agencies. And not to drag this out, but this is important here. Maybe we can keep Tony awake again. Unfortunately, this is not the picture we would like to see. But on our property taxes, if I can get over here to the last column, the top line is residential property. And you can see that our tax only went up a hundred and three thousand or point nine percent. Actually, our commercial and industrial, and this doesn't mean people moved out or et cetera, but on residential, you know, there's been a tremendous slowdown in construction of new homes. Plus, ever since two thousand and eight, the valuation or the comps have come down tremendously on new homes, or existing homes also. Our commercial and industrial did not increase. The increase actually turned out to be in personal property tax. And I'm really making some general statements here. But basically, all of the retail, construction and everything that you see going on out at the columns, all of those retail stores have to have a computer system. They have to have other equipment to support whatever they're selling. And those assets incur a property tax called personal property. And that's what has basically kept us alive. We only had a one point one percent increase in property tax. And we would really like to see the three to four percent that we were incurring, increase that we were incurring when Mayor Gist came on board. And we still had a somewhat strong housing market. And plants were coming in and expanding, et cetera. So this is not good news. If you like big numbers, there's our total appraisal amount of four point nine, almost five billion dollars. But when it really gets down to the assessed value and then to the taxes due and to the increase from the previous year, that five billion comes down to a very small one point one percent increase. So that is not good news. That means that we're either gonna have to be reducing expenses or finding other sources of revenue as we go forward. So basically, I'd like to now, unless there's any questions on the general overview, get into the expense section. Going back to the agenda, you can see, we're talking about the management summary here of the general fund, debt service. We've really already talked about debt service and revenue. So we're really talking now about general fund expenditures. And I'll need help from others when we go through here. But basically, we divide the general fund, general government. It's all in one category on the monthly financial statements that you receive. But here, it's broken out into administration and general government, mainly the buildings. And even though some of the percentages are high, like we're down fifty-six percent in civil service. Well, basically, that's because we only have a civil service board of four or five members that get paid fifty dollars a, a month or a quarter, I forget which it is. But if there are no cases brought before the civil service board, then we don't incur charges. So, you know, that could change. The percentage is misleading there. Information systems, and I'm sure Chief Weiser might identify and relate to this, because he picked up this expense. This is basically software that I, the information department here under Karen had been in charge of or incurring in the past. It's still there, but it's been passed on to the police, because it relates to the police functions or vehicles and, and all of their means of recording data. We did lose a C D E G block grant here that caused a six hundred thousand dollars to decrease. And that's the total that we were talking about on the front page, that sixteen percent decrease. And then you come down here, where I said there was a twenty-one percent increase. And it's basically, as we stated, the, it's the one point one million dollars for Cola is in this line item here. And basically, we have some increases in general insurance. I might at this time ask, if you don't mind me taking the lead here, Stacy Stone to come up and talk to us about insurance in total. Because, as you know, we run about six point seven to seven million dollars in claims on health insurance. And we've had some changes in general insurance of insuring vehicles. Now that we have, let's say, a Quint fire truck that is worth six hundred thousand and police cars that we didn't insure in the past. But then when we ran into some FEMA claims, we were unable to collect monies on them, because they said we were obligated to take out insurance. So I'll turn it over to Stacy.
Yes, on the liability and property insurance, that has increased. And we, we are looking to be over. There was an across-the-board rate increase with T M L on the property and the liability. And as Al said, we are insuring fire trucks if they're less than ten years old, where we weren't in the past, and we weren't insuring fully, let me say that. We were insuring for liability, but for full coverage for the property. And we're also insuring the new, newer police cars, the two thousand and twelve and newer. So that has contributed, as well as full coverage on the helicopter now. So that has, has shown those increases.
How much was the T M L increase?
I'm not exactly sure on the percentage. I want to say it was maybe over a hundred thousand dollars compared to what was actually budgeted. Because I think the budget amount was six seventy-eight, and we showed this year about seven sixty-five. And it, and it's been over, I think, for a couple of years, actually.
And on the health insurance, Stacy, why don't you give us the status of how we're running towards our six point seven million dollar max? If you remember, last year, we overran that and had to take two hundred thousand dollars out of the health reserve. But it's nothing like the seven point four million that we had.
In two thousand and eight?
Eight. I guess that's going back. We have taken steps with Blue Cross, Blue Shield and other health emphasis that her department has put on with the health fair and et cetera to reduce those expenses.
Yes, we're, we're trying any way that we can to, to keep those costs down. Right now, we're looking, we are gonna be running according to budget. We have another week of claims that we'll, we'll get that bill on Tuesday, so we'll see. But right now, we're looking pretty good. And we are using the clinic to try to keep costs down. You know, those are, with our contract with them, those are claims that aren't being filed on the health plan. So, and we have about fifty-eight percent utilization of the clinic compared to every, for, for everyone that is eligible to go. Of course, some people are not right here, you know, they may be a county over or so. But, so I think that's pretty good. But we did have a lot of office visits to the lift, so those were office visits that weren't going on the health plan. So we do believe that that has saved us over a hundred thousand dollars at least. And according to Blue Cross's book of business, we're doing better overall on claims paid per member per month. We're about six percent less than Blue Cross's book of business. So we're glad about that.
Stacy, this, this is the first year where we had to drop back to some of our employees and bring them. We had a couple of choices, either, either lay them off and terminate them or bring them on full-time because of the new health insurance. You want to kind of quickly go over that with the council?
We do have some additional fees due to the Affordable Care Act. There's a couple of fees that we have to pay. We had to pay a hundred and four thousand dollar fee for transitional reinsurance to help fund that. And we will have to pay that again, but it'll be a bit, a little bit less, about seventy-five thousand is what I think for this upcoming year. And also, the, the new rule is if you have an employee that works thirty hours or more per week, on average, more than a hundred and twenty days out of the year, then you have to offer them health insurance now. So we did have some employees that fell into that category, that we have to extend the offer of health and, health insurance coverage. So I think maybe about twenty-six, twenty-seven employees that we had to offer that too. So that increases, of course, the expense there.
And I might show you the dollar value and the impact of what she's talking about. When I went over revenue, I neglected incorrectly to point out this six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars draw from fund balance is basically for those employees that fell under the Obamacare rules and that you just stated, that we had to increase and provide benefits. I forget the exact number of employees. Didn't we, Sam, have about fourteen?
Lynn, what did we have, about fourteen employees that have been working for us for years, part-time, on a temporary basis? And now we brought those employees on full-time with benefits, the fourteen?
So this basically is not negative as far as departmental spending. I hate to use the term, but it's really the result of Obamacare, which you can argue, good, bad, whatever. But we did incur, are, are incurring additional costs because of those guidelines. Correct?
But the bottom line is that we're, we're spending six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars more than we're taking in.
Yes, that's right. That's fund balances. You know, we talked about before, the fund balance having gone down year by year. Some cases because of overspending, some cases under collection of revenue, some cases like the Lambeth situation. And this is one that we would remember for the future to point out that this change cost us close to seven hundred thousand dollars. Any more questions from Stacy on probably the, the single largest item in our general government expense? And, and you would expect it to be, that being healthcare. But we think we have done very well, reducing those total claims, working through our consultant and with Blue Cross. And plus, the emphasis we have had on health fair and healthy living choices, et cetera.
Have, have we seen a, a, a change by providing those types of services, in your opinion?
I think so. You know, with, with having the clinic available, not only does it save the health plan money for claims that aren't filed, but it saves the employee money. So they don't have to worry about, okay, I've gotta meet my deductible, I've gotta go, come out of my pocket a hundred dollars to, to see the doctor. They can go down there and not have to worry about that. So that's preventative measures. You know, they're getting things checked out that maybe they wouldn't otherwise, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Again, I'll just take the lead and then you can follow up on any detailed questions, council members. But another major item, of course, is the transfer to other agencies, which includes everything from the library to E M A, to the airport, along with appropriations to other agencies. And I had made an error initially. In fact, I'm not sure I have the right sheet right now, but I did come back and correct. And I'll let the mayor address what was added to our appropriations to other agencies as far as the Humane Society and Visitors Bureau, those expenses. Could you just?
Yeah, obviously, we're still, we're still trying to work jointly in an effort to provide a no-kill shelter for both the city and county. Now, we're not quite there yet. And I thought this year, in order to at least retain one shelter in the city that has a no-kill policy, if, if the animals are in, in good health and can be, health can be restored. And that is to, to provide funding to the, to the Humane Society. This is the first year for that allocation, is not earmarked for any particular purpose other than the fact to support them in their efforts as, as far as taking care of the animals that, that are brought in and, and to where we can participate in a, in a no-kill situation with, with care of, of our animals. Whether that will be a continuing effort or not, hopefully by next year, we'll be able to look at either other, other foundations, other help privately and other forms of government to come along with the city to see if we can expand that effort and produce, produce a shelter which we can all be proud of and, and, and hold up and, and try to do the, the right thing as far as care of our animals. But we're not there yet. This is kind of a, a Band-Aid approach and getting them some additional funding. Again, it's not earmarked for any particular purpose other than to continue their effort. Fifty thousand, that's earmarked for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, is being matched by the county. You all have seen all the numbers that have been produced by, by C V B as far as what tourism means to our city. A lot of that being generated by, by the West Tennessee Healthcare Sports Flex. I mean, that's one major catalyst in our increase in tourism dollars for, for our city. There are other elements. We just opened a museum at Carnegie, a music, music museum, which we feel like that through the, through the additional funds of Convention and Visitors Bureau, we'll be able to market that and get, and get people into, into downtown Jackson and finally make Jackson a destination. I think Lori, Lori is here, who heads up the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She's a, she's a one-person operation with a little help from the chamber, administrative help. But they have their own jobs to do with, with the chamber functions. So this is an effort just to bump up the, the possibilities and the, and the strategies to get additional marketing for our city, to continue to build those tourism dollars, because they play a major, have a. to continue to build those tourism dollars because they play a major, have a major impact in our budget. As you can see from the increases in the hotel motel tax, it's each year for the last five, six, seven years, they have exceeded anyone's expectations as far as what's collected. So, again, it's an effort to have them further build our city from a marketing standpoint. Lori is here, if you all have any questions as far as this year's allocation to them. It is being matched by the county.
One quick question on the hotel motel. How many new hotels have been constructed in the last three years? It seems like there's two or three, or two, at least two a year.
We, yeah, it's continuing to grow and we're seeing an increase in hotels right now. There's a lot of interest out there and there are actually about two or three projects that are being considered. I would say in the six years that I've been here, we have opened two new hotels, which is saying a lot considering the economy and what's been going on since two thousand and nine.
On the average, do you have the capacity ready for hotels?
I'm not sure of our occupancy right now. What you have to take into consideration, we have a lot of great high-end hotels and then there's kind of a chasm down to some of the lower-end motels. So, it's hard to really evaluate that occupancy-wise. What I do know is that on some of our higher-end hotels, they are getting at eighty and ninety percent occupancy. And to say that there's interest by other developers who are very common in examining that, it looks very promising for the future.
Did that new number include the one that's getting close to opening or?
No, that does not include that one.
Does not include that one. And there is another, to a certain extent, being planned in that same vicinity.
Yes, sir.
You know, on the horizon for the next couple of years, we expect to have two more hotels built in our city.
Yes.
All of that growth has been out in the I-40 quarter near the Prentice Park and that area?
It has been primarily, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nondi, good morning.
Good morning.
How does the Convention and Visitors Bureau work with the Lane College Homecoming, which is a big event?
Yeah, one of the things.
Hotels?
Yeah, it's a very, it's one of the largest events in our community. I have to applaud Lane College this year has reached out to us and we've been invited to serve on the committee with them. They do receive a grant from the Community Economic Development Commission. And then we publicize it through our newsletter and our calendar of events and our other, and the TennesseeVacation.com sites.
Any other questions, Lori, while she's up here on that particular allocation for this year?
I just applaud her for her work that she does.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's a good job, a good job. Okay, thank you, Lori.
Hopefully, everybody did receive, I finally found my corrected copy that shows the, because what was in your book originally was incorrect. It had left off the Humane Society. So, hopefully, everybody has a corrected copy that I personally put in the box. But if not, I will make sure that you have it.
That worksheet still doesn't match the detail. You've got two hundred and ninety-five thousand eight sixty-four, physical budget. And the worksheet's got two sixty-eight, one sixty-one, so there's a discrepancy there somewhere.
That's the old worksheet. That's what I'm saying, I had an old.
No, I'm talking about the actual detailed budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, what's in the detail? Yes, because this was wrong. Karen is starting her, you know, always between the first and second reading, we start a sheet of corrections.
Right.
So, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the twenty-five thousand on there. Plus, there was a slight increase in Southwest Tennessee Development District.
Yes, sir, I have not received that change.
Well, you are receiving it now. My fault.
The difference is not the seventy-five thousand, like twenty-seven thousand dollar difference.
Right, it's, yes.
Did we drop something off that added those two then? Anyway, I should.
I will reconcile it.
Yeah, let's see if we can get those reconciled.
I'm digging a deeper hole here. All I'm telling you is that this is now correct.
The two ninety-five, eight sixty-four is correct, okay. But that's not the figure that's actually in the budget that we got.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to cover the other transfers of other funds in a little bit more detail later? Or do you want to go ahead and kind of continue with the old?
We can go ahead and continue with that.
Before you move there, what is the decision on JacoA, why they're not receiving any funds this year?
Well, they're still receiving some federal funding through the city, aren't they, Sam? As far as JacoA, they receive some community development. Okay, the local funding that's been provided to them over the years, you know, we try to look at our allocations and make recommendations to council on how we can best utilize, you know, our local funding. And obviously, I think we all know from every study that's been conducted that the most vulnerable part of our population, not only in our city, but the state and the nation and probably the world, are women and children. And this year, we've got a number of very good agencies that handle drug abuses, addictions, various elements of that. Some of them are private, some of them are public in nature. I know Pathways involved, JacoA, Aspel Manor, there's a number of other agencies there. And in order to recommend to council the best usage of our local money, which is not a great deal of money, but it's some money, to go into that need that, to assist our most vulnerable population, and that is our mothers and children. So, that allocation is now directed toward the Dream Center because they, that's what they do. They have the rooms there to accommodate. They obviously have a waiting list, you know, on a daily basis of mothers and women and children. They're allowed to bring their children with them. Have a great educational program as far as getting the ladies back on their feet, getting them employment, getting them through educational institutions. The last I heard, they had seven to graduate from the West Tennessee Business College. And so, it's just an effort to recommend to council where we feel, where we can best serve those agencies in our city that handle our most vulnerable population. Many of these women have been abandoned and a lot of things going on in people's lives and it's a.
Well, I could agree with you on that, but I don't have the Dream Center on my list.
I think it's on another sheet, councilman, I think.
Yes, I was going to show you the other sheet. We have it broken into two accounts, the seven sixty-seven appropriations and then the seven twenty account, grants and donations. Let me turn this to where you can read it better.
Mayor, we're cutting out JacoA? How can we do that? I worked in corrections for ten years and I'm telling you right now, as far as a job that they do, keeping these, getting these people back straight and keeping them off the streets of grit and grind. I can't see how we can not keep providing services for them.
Well, I don't think any of these agencies will be totally without funding. I mean, they have access to federal funding, to state funding, from other cabinets within state government, funding from those. Now, I'm basically talking about the local funding from the general fund that we allocate to agencies. And if they were the only group, councilmen, that did this type of service, then it would certainly be worthy of continuing funding. But there are a number of agencies now that are out there to help people who are struggling with addictions. And they all do, you know, a yeoman's job in what they do. But that's my recommendation to council. Council, feel free to change it if you disagree.
Well, I disagree with.
At the end, but that's my recommendation to council.
Look how long this program has been successful, Mayor.
Understand that we have a lot of successful programs.
These other programs have come in here and this is a successful program, it's been for years.
We have a lot of good, successful programs.
I understand that.
And again, at the second reading, if the council prefers to either add funding to them and retain the funding for the Dream Center or take funding from the Dream Center, that will be council, that's y'all's job.
Is this the first year we funded the Dream Center, Mayor?
No, they have received some funding in the past from the city and. Yeah, yeah. How much was the total funding in the past, Sam? How much was the total?
They were giving fifty-six thousand, this year we prepared out forty-six, seven sixteen, ten grand because they have some reasons not to want the emergency services grant funding that we are giving them and the CDV key money, basically some religious issues.
Okay.
And some issues of transsexual identity that they could not access that funding.
Okay.
What the mayor wanted to do, knowing that they serve women and children, in a large dump.
Oh, yeah, it's an excellent program. Thank you, Sam.
We use those same numbers that they have gotten in the past as far as CG funding and federal funding and going into the West Tennessee River Basin Authority.
Are there any other questions on either the grants and donations or the appropriations? And I will provide, Ms. Bell, with the increases, like the twenty-five thousand on the Humane Society. And I don't remember the exact number on Southwest Tennessee Development District. Right, but I mean, I'll, like Randy said, we need to define that accordingly.
On the other items in that transfer of the other funds, we've got a big increase in the library. We've added EMA, we talked about a couple of those. The library's gone from four eighty-seven to six thirty-five, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's about a thirty percent increase. What do we do in difference?
Which page number are you on, Randy, so we can all get?
Oh, gosh, page thirteen of the actual general fund expenses. Okay, so we've gone back to the fifty percent where the city's paying fifty percent and the county's paying fifty percent. Okay, all right, how about the adding EMA that we've never funded before?
Well, we did fund it until last year, I think, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor.
Yeah, if you remember, last year, we, the library was not funding the additional funding. EMA was not funded because basically it's a county function. And the whole reasoning behind that is we had to find a million dollars right up front to pay to the school system for our part of the money which was owed them over the past number of years. That was a settlement which was agreed to by council, but it still cost a million dollars. A million dollars we had to bring out of fund balance. So, we did not fund those agencies last year. Since we do not have to pay the million this year to the public education, then both of those funding areas have been restored as we have traditionally done in the past.
I'll express my concern again, and I always have, about the city taxpayers didn't ask to pay twice, someone county services, EMA being a county service, the library being someone county services, we're asking city taxpayers to pay twice. I won't go against the budget because of that. Next item on there, we've got transferred to CRA District, two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
District one, yes, and what has happened there, of course, we do, Francis Hundley's group over there does an analysis going back to the base year and then the increase over the base year. Those amounts, those dollars go to the district. Now, District two, which is East Jackson, has not had any development, any increase yet. That will be forthcoming.
That's property tax increases that do those CRA District?
Right. And there's, you know, the main hit that caused District one to go up initially was the medical office building that was built across from the hospital. And now, you have building that's occurring down here in the Lyft area and homes being constructed. So, their amount exceeding the base year is increasing, District one is. District two hasn't.
Transfer appropriation to IDBA, is that the same thing? Is that property taxes that are associated with IDBA development that actually belongs to them?
Yes, now, that's basically at exit eighty-five. The TIF district that was established. These are TIF districts, I should say. So, when it says transfer to CRA District one, it's District one TIF district, really.
Okay.
And then you also see the airport was, came down four hundred and ninety-three dollars. And we in previous year had budgeted two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars transferred to capital which did not materialize, so we took that out for this year. So, the big increases are obviously that we picked up EMA like we had in previous years. We were only, last year was the only year we did not fund them. And the library increased as Sam had explained. And then the increase in housing construction and tax base rate in CRA District one. And of course, the last item, which is on page fourteen, you were addressing appropriations to IDB. It runs through the IDB, but it's exit eighty-five TIF that was drawn up. And now, you know, includes the pilot. There's like seventeen retail businesses out there with the food store and restaurants. That area has grown, not as fast as we had hoped it would because we had hoped there would be more than the Holiday Inn Express out there, but that also contributed to that. Any other questions on the general government and our administrative portion? If not, I think on the agenda, we will next go to the police portion and. Did he get bored with me again?
Why don't we take, any objection if we take about a ten minute recess? I think we're ready, Al, for public safety and.
Yeah, I'm keeping score, Mayor. I think I've made ten mistakes and Tony's made one big one.
Yeah, we all remember Tony though. We all remember Ed.
So, I'm going to turn it over to.
It's on the soundtrack.
To the police department because they're not going to make any mistakes.
Okay, all right.
Good morning.
Chief Weiser?
Good morning.
Council has the police department budget and Chief Weiser and Barry here to answer any questions y'all may have on it.
Okay.
Basically starts on page sixteen with police administration, if you're looking at the detail. This is a summary here which hopefully points out on a quick overview, areas by percentage or by decrease in red or increase in black that you might want to ask him about rather than go through the details.
Well, I'd rather them go off the worksheets because that's what I'm paired on. Mr. Wallace, you told me to get ready.
Just on the very first item there, you got regular salaries that dropped by a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I'm assuming those salaries have been moved somewhere else?
Yeah, those were moved to the Family Justice Center.
Okay.
With the Family Justice Center, we didn't create any new positions, we transferred existing positions. Chief, can you tell us where you are? I think we're trying to find. I'm sorry, well, I'm on page one of mine, I don't know. Sixteen?
It's page sixteen in your books. It starts out public safety.
First page of public safety.
And along with that, Mr. Wallace, that over time, you'll see a decrease in that. And that was transferred to with some of those positions.
So, Chief, we're looking at this four hundred and ninety-one thousand for Family Justice Center. Is that majority transfer, is that any new expenses?
Well, as far as the Family Justice Center, as far as the grant, we pay for the salaries.
Okay.
The Family Justice Center, uh, that grant pays for the operations. But if you see a decrease, uh, like what Mr. Wallace asked, uh, that, that person or personnel has been transferred to up under the Family Justice Center.
Okay, thank you.
We put the, uh, uh, Special Investigations Bureau, which does child abuse and sexual crimes. They're, they're, they will be housed out of Family Justice Center along with the Domestic Violence Unit. You know, there's other resources over there such as RAP. So they'll be able to network together. They'll all be under one roof.
What's, what's the grant amount? Is it a three-year grant or?
Um, Captain Hope is managing that grant. He's not here, uh, so, uh...
Okay, I'll ask him.
Yeah.
The next item you got on the, is that same page on professional services?
Right.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase?
Well, as Mr. Al mentioned early, there's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was transferred uh, under IAS Karen Bale. And that's, uh, she transferred that to the Police Department because it's like the report management system, um, MCT, the CAD system, the INCAR system, where we had to pay a maintenance fee.
Okay, so we're outsourcing that? That's not part of IAS salaries going into your department then?
Right, that's maintenance fees that we have to pay. And it would include any upgrades, software upgrades or anything like that. And we also had a four percent increase, uh, in some of our maintenance fees. So you take the hundred and seventy-five thousand along with what was in there and then we had an increase on the maintenance fees cost.
So that, that professional services budget, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars will continue then? Because it's coming out of Inflation Services Administration, the Department of Police Department?
Yes.
Chief, I'm sorry, Randy, you better...
No, I've, I've got a lot of questions.
Okay, um, well, you can go ahead. I'll, I'll jump in later.
I'm just looking at, at, uh, and this may be a, a caring question as much as you, but I was looking at the Crime Prevention Unit, uh...
Are you t...
Which, uh, is account number?
What page, yeah?
Page eighteen.
Uh, and you've got benefits, employee benefits, or about eighty percent salary? Which I, that's why I said it may be a caring question or...
All right, the salaries, uh, when you see a decrease in there, uh...
Do we maybe decrease salaries and neglect to decrease employee benefits?
No, I mean, it shows a decrease in employee benefits and there's also a decrease in salaries. Uh, one of those positions were, was moved under the Family Justice Center also.
Okay. But, but my question then that...
Question, Councilman Wallace, if they moved people, we didn't know if the benefits were calculated or who was being paid there at this time. So if they had moved someone, we'll have to go back and recalculate those benefits.
Okay, okay. I've got a couple of it, and I'll just shoot you an email with the ones that look like they're messed up. Because that's, you know, benefits mean eighty percent salary, obviously, that's...
But we based it on current personnel that's being paid from that line item at this time when we calculated in March.
Okay.
These personnel are still in, they're still in their respective divisions now. They'll, they'll actually be transferred to the Family Justice Center on July first.
Yeah.
When the budget takes effect.
Okay, all right. Well, some of the, some of the benefits probably would be transferred over too.
Right.
Right.
Okay, uh, been on criminal investigation, the dropping salary there, is that for the Justice Center also?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's what I, uh, spoke with about earlier, uh, the Special Investigation Bureau. There's two personnel that, that will be under the Family Justice Center. They, technically, they still fall up under CID, but they're just, uh, uh, it's just a different component of CID we've created, uh, for payroll. And, um, logistics, we've created, you know, the Family Justice Center with that personnel. They'll, they'll all be coded and it's just be much easier for them to be, and actually, they're under one captain over there.
Uh, the, what's the new ICAC division?
That's the ICAC unit. That's Internet Crimes Against Children.
Is that just a new department? You can move people around into that?
Well, we, same thing there. We move personnel around.
So now I guess that hadn't really added any extra expenses to the city? That's just new?
No, those are salaries that, everything that you see on here, we, we've not, I mean, it's, it's existing salaries that we've just moved around.
Okay. On the School Resource Officers?
Mm-hmm.
Which this may be an Al question as much as yours, but it looks like we've got two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar budgeted for that? But our revenue reimbursement's only a hundred and seventy-four thousand? Are we not charging them a full amount?
That has to do with the number of months that, uh, he has the people full-time, twelve months, and we're getting paid for...
Yeah, I'm sure there's, uh, yeah, I'm sure the school system only...
Okay, but evidently, we're not, we're...
Yeah, actually, or...
So a hundred percent of their expenses for the whole year are in this department, but we're only, they're only being used by the school ten, ten months. So we are getting, being reimbursed for them now.
Yes. What page, young?
Page what?
What page are you on?
I have no idea.
I'm trying to keep up with you.
Okay. I'm rolling down real fast.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Jag, the JAG, uh, Jackson Family Justice, there's an increase in that. What's the difference in the Family Justice Center and Jackson Family Justice? Or is that a grant, JAG grant?
Or JAG. JAG, Justice Assistance Grant. We get every year.
Okay.
And we, we have to split half that of the account.
All right, do we get, do we get more this year than we have in the past? Because the expenses are about double what they were last year. I'm, uh, count number forty-two, one ninety-three. Sorry, I should put page number on here somewhere, no? Page what? I think, Anita says she thinks it's twenty-one, page twenty-one?
No, it's, it's actually on twenty-seven. You're talking about the JAG Jackson Family Justice Grant. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, uh, page twenty-eight, top of page twenty-eight.
Councilman Wallace, that grant's eighty thousand per year. Just got started this last year. That's less and the eighty thousand this year to cover the new center. And then the operations camp that you see is the Family Justice Center. That's where they move those individuals as well as the building operational costs, not covered by the grant.
Okay, I didn't get any of that.
How many years is that grant? How many years is that grant, Karen?
Uh, currently it's three years, hook and be.
I had a question while he's...
Yes, sir.
Pulling together. Uh, it, it was mentioned a bit earlier that, uh, federal and state grants that are, are, are out there are kinda drying up. Uh, how's that, how has that affected this year's budget and kinda what are, what are our plans going forward?
Well, I mean, we still have, uh, a few active grants. We've got the, uh, the JAG grant, um, we've got the, uh, GRIK grant, uh... The, the Family Justice Center grant, uh, but things like the COPS grant where it funded salaries, you know, we, we, we don't have those grants anymore. So, uh, you know, it's just, we're just having to do what resources we've got. But I mean, we're still, Captain Hope, that's pretty much his job is apply for grants and manage grants. And he works with Ms. Bell's office on all these grants. And, I mean, we're actively, uh, pursuing grants daily. Uh, we're looking at a body camera grant right now. So I mean, there's a number of grants that we continue to apply, apply for.
Okay, all right, thanks, Chief.
Council groups, in addition to the grants, if you remember, I mean, Obama implemented several initiatives that he did. There was the ARRA grants, there was also a focus on homeland security. Well, they've steered funds now more toward, toward healthcare and some other things to accomplish his initiatives during the last term. So that's the reason federal grants are not as much available as they were during the homeland security era.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
As it relates to overtime salaries, you had a figure of four hundred and fifty-eight thousand for twenty fifteen. Now you're going back to two eighty-five. Overtime salaries.
Yeah, are you, are you referring to the department overtime as a whole for all divisions?
Yeah, on page seventeen.
Seventeen. And you're talking about Patrol Division?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Mr. Buchanan, when I took this position in, uh, in October, the Patrol Division was at ninety-three percent of the overtime budget. Uh, we're gonna come in close this year as overall budget, I think, of being close. So we're gonna change the way we do business and pull from different resources. If we can decrease crime, we can decrease overtime. So I know historically in the past, uh, they've gone over the overtime budget, but, uh, we're gonna manage that a little better. Outside, uh, you know, a significant uptick in crime or some type of natural disaster, we should be able to manage with the amount of overtime that we have budgeted.
So you feel like the budgeted amount you have is manageable for your overtime salaries?
Yes, sir. If we, uh, if we go over, we'll save somewhere else. So, uh, CID, Criminal Investigations Division, uh, you know, they always go over. But there again, if we can decrease crime, we'll decrease overtime. So they're still there over this year, but as overall division, I think they're gonna come in under budget or right at budget. So, uh, we're gonna do a better job of, of, uh, managing our budgets. Uh, we're, we've, uh, we're doing some community-oriented policing training for all our police officers. We're doing, uh, middle management training for all our first-line supervisors. And that's the type of things that we're talking about is, is managing budgets, uh, overtime, comp time. Uh, you know, comp time's always, uh, always an issue, but, uh, when we, we have to train. And a lot of these guys work second and third shift, so, you know, we reimburse them with comp time. But, uh, but we're gonna do a better job of managing, uh, the budget that we have in front of us.
The COP training, you're coming back with COP, right?
Yes, yes, uh, yeah.
That's an asset to both the Police Department and the community.
Right, yeah, and...
Uniform offices total, and I'm finished.
Total, well, we, uh, we've got two hundred and twenty-eight officers. Uh, well, I think we have nine openings, uh, we're getting ready to, uh, to go through the hiring process again. As far as the Patrol Division, I think there's, uh, one ten? One thirty-eight in Patrol overall.
Special units. Okay.
Yeah. So, so out of that, uh, two twenty-eight, you've got that number in Patrol. And then, you know, we've got a, uh, a bit support unit with Special Operations. Um, we, uh, we've had support of City Council and the Mayor. And, you know, we, we, we've got a lot, a lot of resources in, uh, Special Operations as far as Narcotics Unit, the Gang Unit, uh, K-nine, uh, the Street Crimes Unit. So we've got a lot of resources. If, uh, you know, if we, if we need some assistance or need additional manpower, we're, uh, we're pulling from those divisions. And we've also increased the Traffic Division by personnel. So, uh, so we're, we're pulling from other resources instead of paying overtime. We're doing some shift adjustments. So, you know, it's, uh, this is, we, we changing the way we do business.
Chief, when our aviation unit is utilized in other counties to assist other departments, are we reimbursed for that? Or is that just something that we do?
No, that's just a service we, uh, we provide. You know, we're, we're part of the, uh, uh, multi-jurisdictional, the Western State Gang Task Force. Uh, we have, uh, officers and investigators from all over, uh, the twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth District, come and assist us on investigations, saturations, uh, intelligence, uh, just working cases together. Uh, because when you get into some more of the complex investigations, uh, such as organized crime, they are not only here in Jackson, they're throughout West Tennessee. So we network with all these agencies. So we're getting a service back, uh, from these different agencies and on these type of investigations. So it's, it's pretty much just a courtesy. Uh, we send, uh, stand the same courtesy with our K-nine unit, uh, so...
I will, I would like to back you, good Mr. Wallace. When we get, when we get equipment like that from the federal government, just like for our bomb unit, we now have to agree to assist, because every agency in, in West Tennessee is not allowed to get all of this equipment like... We're the only agency in West Tennessee that is able to get a bomb when the FBI decides that.
Right.
But because they've given us, um, four or five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment, including that robot, we have to agree to respond to other areas, uh, in West Tennessee as, as part of a regional response team. So the helicopter counter works the same way, the military counter, when they give us that helicopter, they kind of expect us to, uh, to utilize it to assist.
And, and the Western District.
And I'm assuming the reason we insured that helicopter this year is for... What?
Well, I mean, we, 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 we've got a substantial investment in that helicopter with, uh, with the infrared system and night vision system. Uh, I, I don't have a specific number, but, uh, the best I recall, that system was around a hundred fifty-two, hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, if it goes down, we need to make sure that that piece of equipment is insured.
So it's more of the equipment in it more so than the actual helicopter itself?
Well, I mean, just overall.
Same, yeah, so, okay. Okay, okay.
Well, we got the helicopter for free. Uh, but we had to make the investment, uh, uh, for that system. Uh, to go back to Mr. Buchanan, uh, we do have officers assigned to the US Marshal Task Force, uh, the ATF Task Force, Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, the Federal Bureau of Investigations, uh, the Secret Service. All those task force, uh, uh, those officers that work those type of investigations, they reimburse us for overtime. So, uh, some of the overtime that you see on there is, uh, like if you look at the Gang Unit, um, a lot of those guys are assigned to a state or federal task force. And, and some of that money is being reimbursed by the federal government, so...
Okay, any other questions from Chief Weiser or Deputy Chief Michael?
Mayor, can I ask you, since you have each department there, you also do your cap, so they don't have to come back later?
Great idea, Mr. Bell. Thank you very much. Let's flip over to Police Capital. And if you have any, if you have any questions?
I, I would add that, um, that I, I stated, uh, last board meeting that I would have the alarm ordinance on the July agenda, uh, with the amount of stuff that's on the July agenda. And, uh, we, we've got to talk to the city attorney, uh, about a recommendation on alarm ordinance. It's probably gonna be, uh, the August meeting before I can get that on there. So I just wanted to clarify that because that came up last board meeting about the alarm ordinance. The alarm system. I said I was gonna try to get on the July agenda. It's probably gonna, it, it will be the August agenda. Alarm ordinance.
Alarm ordinance, okay, okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, we're, we're, uh, we're over on Police Capital now for Council.
The majority of our Police Capital, uh, as you can tell, is, uh, replacement and, uh, body armor. Body armor that's inspired, uh, replacement in computers, uh, laptops and vehicles. Um, everything that's on here is a, uh, is, you know, a necessity. We, uh, we really had to prioritize what we put on here. And so everything on here is a priority, but I'll take any questions.
vested cameras? Are, are we still trying to get a grant or are we working on that?
On the, uh, on the police cameras?
Yeah.
Uh, I think right now we have...
I think your right term is body cam.
Oh, body cameras? Well, where we're at with the body cameras is, uh, we actually have a couple in the field that we're testing. We have a body camera committee right now, so we're testing those out, some different models. The, the body camera, there's things changing daily. Uh, uh, there's, I, I anticipate some legislation, either state or, or from the, from the feds. Uh, we, we have to have a policy and, uh, procedure in place prior to implementing body cameras at a large scale. Uh, and I'll just give you a perfect example. If I came to one of your houses and you were involved in domestic disturbance and the officer had on a body camera, uh, we, we have to have a policy in place because WBBJ is gonna be down there next morning and they're gonna want, uh, the video from the body, body camera. So we have to have all these things in place and we, and we've got this committee in place and, and we're working on it and we're testing it out. And the data storage depend on, um, how many body cameras we're gonna go with. It's, uh, we were, uh, talking about doing a test program, implementing twenty-five body cameras to see what kinda data storage it was gonna take. Um, I'm not a big data person, but they tell me, uh, you remember the one, one hour... Um, I'm not a big data person, but they tell me, uh, do you remember the one, one hour, what, what they said? But anyway, uh, just one hour from one body camera. And, uh, you know, if you combine that toward fifty or a hundred body cameras, that's a lot of data storage. And they're gonna be running more than one hour a day. So, uh, so we're working on those type of things, uh, we're making progress. Uh, but it's, it's just not that simple, is to go out and buy a hundred body cameras and, and, and put them on officers. Sorry?
Is funding available?
Well, there, there is grants available. But like I said, uh, uh, policy and procedure and legislation, it's, this is something that's, uh, going throughout the whole country. So, it, it's evolving daily. So, that's the reason why we're doing this test program. Uh, we're gonna do it on a small scale, because we wanna make sure if we implement this, that we're managing, managing it properly. It's gonna take additional man-hours, personnel, just to manage this system. Uh, you know, we have, uh, we have two full-time employees assigned to the in-car camera system that we have in our police cars. So, you know, any kind of technical problems, uh, downloads, all that type of stuff. Uh, so, it, it's a bit deal logistically. So, we wanna make sure when we implement it, that we have everything done and, and, and it's, it's done properly and right.
Chief, that data storage is a, is a large part of the expense.
Well, we had budgeted, uh, yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it will be probably, uh, depending on how much money we spend, uh, per camera. If you buy seventy-five cameras, we're probably gonna need twenty-five thousand dollars in data storage. I mean, you can probably figure thirty percent of whatever we spend, if the cameras run, a, uh, a thousand dollars apiece. A lot of the cameras that are out there now, uh, are consumer grade. They're not, uh, we, we want cameras on, uh, for evidence purposes. We want good, uh, quality cameras, so, so we're trying to test all these cameras out. So, I mean, we're, we're making progress, we're gonna get there. We just wanna make sure this thing's done right.
Do you have a time limit, timeframe of the tests?
Well, we're testing the cameras right now. Uh, the ones we got, they report back to the committee, uh, uh, in a couple of weeks. We're working on, uh, uh, policy and procedures. So, uh, you know, I can, at some point later on, kinda give you update in what direction we're heading.
And that policy and procedure will come out of the department?
Well, I, we, we'll look at other departments, we'll look at, uh, state and federal law. Uh, there, excuse me, there's a number of things that we'll have to consider. Uh, we'll have the city attorney involved, we'll have, uh, Major Corley involved. I mean, it's, uh, so we, we'll take all those things into account.
Well, just to speak, I was in Nashville a couple of weeks ago. I think Metro Nashville, they kept, and he was talking about body cameras and everything. And basically what you're saying is, like, the technology's moving so quick in the data to kinda keep it going is-
Right.
They only have one.
Right.
So, they say they try to, you know, test them and everything.
Right, they're doing a pilot program, uh, uh, a lot of the major cities are doing these, these same type pilot programs. Because it's, uh, it, I mean, it's gonna be a big deal to manage, uh, that number of cameras. I'm, I know a lot of smaller departments have already gone to them. It's easy to manage, uh, ten body cameras. You know, if you've got, uh, three or four officers a shift and they're rotating those cameras, that, that's easy. But if you've got two-hundred-and-twenty-eight officers and on top of in-car cameras, that, that's a big task. So, we wanna make sure we do it right, uh, so.
Okay, any, any questions on capital that you-
Well, the, yeah, there's, well, there's four vehicles, uh, submitted out of the metro drive front. Uh, that's a hundred-and-twenty thousand. Um, I don't have that number in front of me. I think they've got about two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand in there right now.
Is that right?
Um, all that money comes from seizures, fines. Yeah, it's not taxpayer money, uh. Uh, is there any questions on the, the Police Department, Capital, by division?
No.
You can just go down the three big items of criminal investigation, um, gang and, uh, and we know the topic here, but those two, investigation and gang control, were the expenses?
Well, I mean, they're, well, the biggest expenses, there, there's two vehicles, uh, for the gang unit, uh, which we have that unit fully staffed now. Uh, we've got some, uh, we, they're short of vehicle, we need to get that vehicle replaced. They haven't, uh, had any, any vehicles since, uh, two thousand eight. So, what they're driving is, uh, they need a couple of new vehicles with CID. They have two, two vehicles that's over fourteen years old, uh, that's, uh, that's doing good to get back and forth to work. So, we need to get those two vehicles replaced, uh. And, you know, the other stuff is, uh, computers. I mean, that's, that's a necessity, uh.
Okay, council, council good on PD Capital now?
His total capital's only three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, three sixty-eight, which compared to previous years is not absorbed in it at all.
The, the other major expense is, uh, is the ten replacement vest for twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's, uh, that's tactical vest, uh, you know, the other ones are expired. So, uh, we had to replace them once they expire. I think, uh, most of them have a five to six-year expiration date.
Chief, you, you may have answered this question, but you had mentioned that, uh, plan to hire new officers. Is that in this budget, or would that-
Well, those salaries, yeah, those salaries are in this budget.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Very thank you all. Staying on, uh, public safety, we'll ask the Chief Stewart, Fire Department budget. If they don't go to the operating budget, then we'll look at his capital also.
Yeah, I'll make some backup. Good morning. Mayor, Council. I'm ready here, ready for any questions. My budget is staying about the same. The, uh, present budget that we're working on, we're at about eighty-four percent, eighty-six percent. So, we feel like if we work hard, we stay within. We have a couple of line items that are above what we predicted, but there are also items that you can't really predict as far as, uh, maintenance of the fleet and overtime.
Like he said, overall, they're minus point one zero percent. He's got some pluses and minuses, having shifted expenses, but overall, it's a, it's a flat budget.
Chief, I guess the first thing that came my attention was just in your, uh, uh, just the Fire Department operations, your overtime salaries.
Mm-hmm.
You're already over last year's budget, uh, but for next year, you cut your budget in half. How are you planning on to be able to keep your overtime salaries down?
We have a recruit class right now of thirteen. This year's been like a perfect storm. We've had, uh, five or six retire. We've had two young men, young firefighters, that have left. And, uh, we've had injuries that they're not the, uh, normal, where they're back in a week. They've been like three and four months. Uh, I just believe when we get these new people on, that, uh, we'll be able to take care of it.
Chief, how many more weeks they have in their, in their training, or they-
They, they actually have another three to four weeks, and it's a sixteen-week. And that's another reason that it's gone up. When we, they go through a sixteen-week, uh, training period, and that keeps them off. We can't put them on the line till, till they get through.
Chief, how many are in that class?
Uh, we have, uh, twelve.
Twelve, how many of those are African-Americans?
Actually, uh, I'm gonna say five.
Great.
Yeah.
Falling, falling back on the Fire Department operations again, you've got a other wages item? That's going for five thousand, ninety-five thousand?
Other wages is the state supplement, so that's directly what they receive this year from the state for their training. No expense to the city whatsoever.
Okay, so we've had those wages out of, and then we get reimbursed for it?
Exactly. Well, we don't pay until we get the check from the state.
It's a wash.
And you had mentioned motor vehicle expense, and you reducing your more- Last year, we got two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, and your budget is only a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand? Or last year, or year to date, we spent two-nineteen, your only budget is one-twenty-five. How are you gonna cut your motor vehicle expense that much?
We believe a new system, a new system that we have gotten, uh, going as far as, we're working with, uh, Mr. Todd, and, uh, we're slowly getting the equipment, uh, in order and fixed, where before it was kinda spotty. Plus, as you see in Capital, y'all are nice enough to be giving us a new pumper.
Not yet.
And as we improve the fleet and it gets younger, we also foresee-
Okay, so that, a lot of that expense is repairs and not gas?
Yeah, oh, it is, yes. It's a tremendous amount of repairs. As you can imagine, it's expensive on a two, three-hundred-thousand-dollar vehicle.
Are all our repairs done locally, or we have to carry some to Memphis or somewhere else?
We do, we carry some to Memphis. We do what we can locally, but, uh, it's, it makes more sense on some of them to take them to Memphis because of the, it's a different animal when you look at a fire truck.
Typically, how long are they out of service when they're under repair? I'm sure that depends on what the problem is.
Exactly, but normally, within two or three weeks, and some of them even quicker. But, uh, the most would be a month.
Is it because we don't have the personnel with the knowledge, is that the reason, or?
It's part of that, uh, the, like I said, it's, it's the nature of the animal. You, it's a specialty truck. It's not like any other vehicle on the road. And, uh, to say that you could keep somebody special and keep all of the parts on hand, it, it would be nearly impossible.
It's just not necessarily all engine, it's other things as far as the pumping mechanisms or-
Right. Lot of hydraulic, when you get into the aerials, it's, it's a specialty.
His capital, Charles, is, uh, four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, four ninety-four. And as he stated, his pumper replacement is, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand of that, so. Uh, and then he's got turnout gear and I don't think there's anything really unusual in there, is there?
No, it's, it's all replacement. It's, uh, needed.
And I believe you told us that takes the last open-top fire truck out of-
It does.
Is the fleet, or may, it may still be there, but it won't be utilized.
No, it'd be in reserve.
Chief, we've been losing, what, three, four a year, or on retirement, at least three or four a year?
We have. This year, it really jumped.
Yeah.
It, it's just the way it goes. Uh, I remember several years ago, same thing happened, back when I was younger. But it really, this year, and we've still got a few that can go. But, uh, just found out, we're you, we're losing, uh, one of our newer firefighters. He's going, found another job, probably better paying, but, uh, that's good and bad. It's bad to lose him, but it makes me think that, uh, the economy is getting a little better if there won't be leave a good job like that. And, uh, that, that makes me feel good anyway, for the young man.
Okay, any, any additional-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A flashback just came to my mind, helped me understand and helped me remember as it relates to five million policemen's on retirement. We passed that four or five years ago, or is Miss Newton's, or is, uh, does anybody remember that?
We did, yes, sir.
What, what, how many years?
Uh, they can, they can retire fifty-five with what's called a bridge. So, they get the extra, that's why we pay extra on TCRX. We've made additional, uh, almost two percent extra on their TCRX at retirement.
But it must retire at what?
Uh, sixty, they're Operation Sixty-Two Administrator.
And that's fifty-five with twenty-five years' service, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Boy, that's a loss.
You have passed it.
I said that's a loss, all the knowledge is gone real quick.
It is, we're losing a lot of experience.
Yes, sir. I did my vote for it, I wasn't there. I will be voting for it.
Okay, any other questions from council on the Fire Department, uh, either their operating budget or their capital budget? Okay, Doc, Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
Next mayor would be, uh, other public safety, which would be Central Dispatch.
Okay, Ms. Dragon, Ms. Fernanda, come on up.
What does she do?
Does everything. More than you can do. Now, you don't wanna know.
The Sisco be good.
He's over-sugared himself, he drank too much coffee.
Okay.
All right, okay, we're on Central Dispatch?
Yes, sir. There is not a great deal to report about Central Dispatch. Basically, the budget that we had to work with last year is continuing to this year. The increase that you may see on the line items is due to salaries. Uh, Central Dispatch has been very fortunate enough, we've, uh, had a turnover in the last couple of years, but the employees that we recently hired last year are still with us, and that's great. So, therefore, their progression wages are, are gonna be part of the increased salary reason. Another in, reason is going to be, uh, benefits is because of the longevity. We've had several that senior employees that are still at Central Dispatch that have went into their fifteenth year. So, therefore, they're getting their longevity increases as well. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions?
As fast as Miss Bill.
I'm sorry.
You gotta, you gotta listen in a hurry, you gotta listen in a hurry. Any question-
Made it short and sweet.
On, uh, on, uh, Central Dispatch and their operating budget?
How many employees do y'all have now?
Twenty-seven. We have one space, we have one part-time and one space available.
Has that increased over the years?
Yes, sir, when I first came back in two thousand and ten, I had asked for additional employees 'cause they only had eighteen. But then we've inherited another division within Central Dispatch called the PBX Operator. So, we hired four in there.
Tell the council what they do.
PBX, PBX is the primary answering point for the City of Jackson, the Jackson Police Department and City Hall, if their phone system goes down. They are, they're in a room by theirself outside of the Central Dispatch room, so it's a quiet room. They also have two screened, uh, fifty-five-inch TVs that are monitoring the target area camera systems as well. So, in their time that they're not answering the public safety phone for the service for Jackson, they're monitoring the camera system as, as well within the city. They, if they see anything going on, they target that camera, bring it up, and they make dispatch aware, which is steps away. Or they have a radio in there at their convenience that they can use as well. But they're not dispatchers.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Might as well cover Capital at the same time.
Yeah, let's cover the Capital, Fernanda's Capital. We see the tower again, do we not?
It's a flat two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, uh, I'll let Fernanda go through that.
That, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars capital that you see there is going to be a great saving for our infrastructure and the tower system for the radio system. Uh, you know that this year, we've, uh, taken over the south tower as well from the JEA site. There's no other means in that tower, the south tower, except for the Jackson Police Department, uh, infrastructure, the City of Jackson infrastructure radio system, and that is it. So, that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand capital is set aside for the infrastructure repair and anything that we may need for as far as the radio system for the city.
Okay, any questions from council on, um, Capital or Central Dispatch? Okay, if not, thank you, Fernanda.
Thank you.
Now I know what she do.
He left.
Okay, you're good, you're good. Who's that, Claire?
Now we're into Public Works Department and, um, planning is next on my little summary sheet here. Be stand.
Um, as you can see with planning, it's just basically a fixed budget. I mean, basically what we had last year, we've just carried forward. Um, there's some slight decreases, um, as, as you see in reimbursed planning, that's a state grant. There's some slight decreases, um, as, as you see in reimbursed planning. That's a state grant, and we don't have any control over that amount. They give us funds to do transportation planning and whatever it is is what we end up with, so it's decreased a little bit, but everything's flat.
Do you reimburse expense JTA? That's not you, is it?
No.
You're, you're reimbursed by the county for some of their plan.
We do, the, the county, we do the county's planning for them, and they reimburse us for, uh, for doing that. We also, uh, under my department is Keep Jackson Beautiful and, um, and the Tree Board, uh, and all those again are flat. And Liberty Gardens under there and all that's flat. Uh, Liberty Garden, of course, is based on the donations and, and, uh, they have funds that come in through donations, and whatever they get is what they can use toward improvements, so, but everything's, nothing's, nothing's changed.
The reimbursable planning act, you've got professional services, a hundred and forty-eight thousand. What do we, what does that do?
Uh, every five years, we have to update our long-range transportation plan, so when we do that, we have to hire a consultant to do the update, and that's what that money goes to.
Okay, any other questions with Stan on operating?
Yeah, we're, we're going back to the official services. We haven't spent anything at all in the current year on that. Is that gonna happen between now and the end of the year, or which?
No, it's just, again, those are direct expense line items. Um, most of what we get through the state is, is reimbursing hours that we spend on transportation planning, so since the city already pays our hours, that's just reimbursed money that comes back into the general fund. Uh, the line items you see that are there are budgetary line items. They're just for direct expenses when we have them. And if they're not, if we don't have those direct expenses in those line items, then, then the money is billed in our side.
Okay, we didn't have any in the current year, but we are expected to have some next year.
Yes, we'll be, we'll start working on that.
Okay. Any capital that you?
Just one small item under Keep Jackson Beautiful. There's about, um, uh, nine thousand or so dollars that, that's in there for banners downtown. Uh, the banners that are downtown are over ten years old, and they're starting to rip and tear and fade and come off the brackets, and so we're just replacing those.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Okay, if not, thanks, Dan.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
The building department, if Tom Windbusch is here.
Tom will be handling the building and housing codes. Both of those are...
Good morning, council mayor.
Before we get to him, Al, that reimbursed JTA, I'm sure that's not him either. What is that?
It is. If you remember last year, I called a grant to you guys that now, uh, Jackson Transit Authority, FTA grants has to come pass through the city, and we reimburse them. Not something I'm thrilled about, but it's something we inherited based on federal transportation.
Okay, so that's just a wash then?
It's a wash.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions this morning?
Tom, both of his are, are down, so usually does not generate a lot of questions, so... Tom, if you have, it'd be a good time to ask him.
Why did you look at me?
You can answer that.
I like to commend Mr. Chairman. Mr. Windbusch and his building department staff for such a fine job as it relates to housing code enforcement and turn down of dilapidated housing. Uh, they have done an excellent job. I know they over budget, but I hope he has enough money in his budget 'cause we got a lot more work to do.
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, I'm sure if there's not enough, I'm sure there will be some that can be gotten for that.
How many houses we got ready? It's going through abatement and ready to be?
Uh, just turned in five more. They tore down three this week, turned in five more. There's sixteen more to be ready for demolition after August sixteenth, and we're currently working on seventy-six more that's in the abatement process.
It makes the neighborhood safer with respect to not people hiding out in abandoned houses, crime reduction, makes it cleaner. Those who want to build subdivisions, those investors who want to come in, like the White Hall that we're building through Southwest, the housing, it just makes everything better.
Well, I spoke to Councilman Dodd earlier this week, and, and he agrees as I do that, uh, you, you steadily hear this is a new age, this is a new time. Uh, yes, it is. There's some things I have to accept, some things I never will. But now that we've had so many foreclosures, so many blighted areas, I think some of the laws need to be changed to where things can be done quicker, to if you can't get in touch with these people, they refuse to be in touch, we should be able to move on, and I think...
I have a quick question on the, the building demolition. I don't know if the columns got switched, but it looks like from what it reads now is we're reducing the cost, our budget line by a hundred and forty-six thousand, so do we, we reducing it by nine thousand?
No, no, no. The sermon had West Jackson demolition in this past year, so that's how long they are. We had an amendment that was approved earlier, so that's why it's...
Okay.
Yeah, and it was a hundred and forty-six thousand.
Go ahead, Councilman Dodd.
Yes, I would like to put a little small committee together, take a look at, see can we get some laws in place to kind of shorten the time with some of the landlord. They bought these houses, they stay up about a year, and a lot of them ain't going back in nowhere, and they just sit there and bought it up.
I think, I think, I think the attorney is working on that as we're meeting this morning, has been. Using state law, I think this, I think state, state law this year has changed somewhat to help facilitate that type thing, and he's using that to...
Did on, I believe, on the taxes, a part of it. Any other questions?
Okay.
On the landfill dumping, we spent fifty-one thousand dollars last year, uh, and that's up a little bit, it's up three thousand dollars from last year's budget. Was that just the increase in the dumping? Is that the dumping where we tear a house down, we gotta dump it?
Correct, the landfill fees.
Was a lot of that from last year due to the West Jackson?
No.
Okay, so the increase is just gonna be the increase.
Correct. And I hope we use all of that plus.
Okay, council, any, any other questions of Tom? Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is really, uh, Public Service Complex, which is mostly, uh, that's Kathleen Honeycutt. We, not, not much controllable expense in there, if I can get it out correctly. It's basically the building itself, the utilities, et cetera, but if you want, we can address that. It's a break even from year to year.
Mainly that has all the utilities, custodial care and any expenses related to the building itself, right? Okay. All right. Um, next, I guess, is, uh, Scott.
Scott's got street lighting and then several others that are down the page here, but maybe we ought to just get Scott up here and do them all.
Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
Basically, our, the budgets we're responsible for are street lighting, um, stormwater management, which is next in line there, and then skip down to traffic sign, traffic signalization, uh, our engineering, uh, department, uh, budget itself, and then stormwater operations budget. The only budget that actually changed of those is the stormwater operations budget, and I think that was a three percent increase or something because of, uh, salary benefits, and so, uh, we've adjusted, um, and all the other budgets are held to what we had this past year. If you have any questions on those, I can answer them.
You're, you're not state street maintenance, are you?
We're not.
No.
Buddy up here.
Buddy and them will handle that in just a minute.
Okay, any questions on the operating budget? Uh, you go to capital, uh, under that operation, so take, take a look at that if you have any questions.
We have two, two main capital line items. It's our, uh, street resurfacing slash projects, uh, account. Uh, this year, we, we're, you know, we're basically starting off with, uh, um, two point two million dollars being allocated new funds and with a three hundred thousand dollar, um, carry forward from the current year we're in. And, uh, so that'll start us off with two and a half million dollars to go towards street paving and any projects that, um, that will come up through the year. We do have a current, um, ongoing list of streets that's been requested that we've analyzed. The list exceeds, obviously, uh, two and a half million dollars, and so we're going through and, and will be, uh, working through individual districts and the, trying to pick the worst of the worst, I guess you'd say, streets that, uh, make sense to pave, uh, and we'll be getting, working back with the mayor. And, and I've, I've talked with several of you from the council, uh, about individual streets that y'all are, uh, have heard a lot of feedback from the citizens from. So, uh, we'll be crafting that and, uh, and trying to make that fit into the number best we can. Uh, the other, um, uh, project, uh, main, main, uh, line item is traffic signalization, uh, which we've got, um, I think two hundred and... Two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, well, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of new money, and a hundred and thirteen thousand, five forty-four is a rollover from this current year. Uh, that is some ITS, or intelligent transportation system work, that we're trying to get our signal system tied into, um, a central place in City Hall so that we can monitor some of our traffic signals. I've, I've explained a little of that to you before. We just haven't got that project fully executed, uh, and so we're rolling that money over to the new year to, to do that.
Scott, good morning.
Morning.
Is Highland and Dedrick, isn't that the roundabout?
It is, um, and I, um, slide that back. Yeah, the, the other projects that you see, the East Chester Phase Two, which we're gonna have complete, so we're not carrying it forward into the new year. The Highland and Dedrick is the roundabout, which, uh, they, they went through the environmental process, um, and they're, they're working on the design plans, going through the, going through the right-of-way purchase, uh, portion of it now. Effie Wright is under design, um, and then the Highland Avenue sidewalk is, uh, somewhere between the environmental, in the environmental stage as well.
Do you know where that will, where that'll go from?
That'll run from Radio Road up to Skyline Drive, basically. There's a portion there on, on the west side of Highland that we see. You'll see a lot of, there's a lot of traffic that walks down through there or, or risk their lives on a scooter going through there, and that's what, you know, that's gonna close that gap. But all, all four of those, uh, well, Chester will be done, but the other three will just be a continuation. Um, and we've got the, uh, got the funding set aside, and most of those projects have a, a, a healthy reimbursement. It's usually either, I think on one of them, we have five percent money, one we have a hundred percent money, and then, um, the other, we have a eighty-twenty match.
Mr. Chandler, as it relates to the CRA, uh, maybe Mr. Dawson, I believe, uh, Stan is gone. You got three hundred, is, is under you, you're the department, three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's really Harvey. Uh, we gave each district, District One and District Two, four hundred thousand dollars in addition to the million six. And so far, the East Jackson people have only used sixty thousand, so now there's three hundred and forty thousand available for them this year. In addition to the million six that they have.
So we're gonna get ready for the, the, uh, project at the corner of Effie Wright and White Hall, they can use it there with the developer, Mr. Honey's using it. For making, the developer.
Right.
Okay, Stan knows more about it.
Yes, he's, but that's what it is. It's the balance of that four hundred thousand that we gave both districts right now.
Scott, on the, uh, street resurfacing?
Yes, sir.
Is we're in the process of borrowing money to pay for three years of street resurfacing? With the streets so bad, we might be better off to use more than a third of that this year to get it back up, or you think that'd be a mistake? And then we wouldn't have anybody left next two years to use a lot of it?
I, I, I think, I mean, from what I've feedback with the mayor is that we're, we're trying to look at maintenance, uh, from the previous winter, look at some of that first. That may not even be full streets getting paved, but focusing on some of our collector streets and doing, uh, the, you know, the sections that we identify that really just need patching or, you could say patching, but enough failure that we, um, pave in a strip but not pave all the way across, um, the full lane widths. And so we're gonna be looking at handling some maintenance-type items, which it's all maintenance, but instead of doing a whole road, um, some of our higher-dollar ones that we couldn't afford to do complete, completely, we'll try to section those off so that there's still money available to do pavings throughout the district as well.
Okay, any other, any other questions from Scott while he's here? Okay, thank you, sir. Um, go back up and catch street maintenance, I guess, on Al and street cleaning, uh, just if there's any questions. We got two deputy superintendent's here from the street department. If y'all have any questions about, uh, their operation.
I got one.
Okay.
You gotta come up with something. The only one I had is the state street maintenance and the motor vehicle repairs. We had no expenses at all this year. Uh, we're still budgeting thirty-nine thousand dollars for, for next year. Were we just lucky this year to not have any expenses, or?
What?
And state street maintenance, the very last item, state street maintenance.
What page are you on, Randy?
Uh, I have no idea.
Uh, page forty.
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the, uh, if state street maintenance, the motor vehicle repair is the very last item, four-three-one-nine-six, three-three-nine.
Three-one-nine-oh, three-three-nine-oh.
Oh, okay, he's talking about...
Page forty-two.
Page forty-two. Motor vehicle repairs, forty-three-one-nine-six, three-three-nine, under, uh, state street maintenance. Motor.
Seventy-six percent.
What he's looking at, uh, buddy, is that there were no year-to-date totals spent, and now we're asking for thirty-nine thousand. Is that right?
Yes, that's, exactly. I mean, do we have motor vehicles there?
Part of that business, we have got to, we threw all that money down. We've got to lose it all. We, we got to ask the state, they got two contracts.
Oh, okay, I see what you're talking about, yeah.
You gotta move that money out, I already know, uh, uh, three parts go.
Okay, I see, yeah, that's, yeah, we have money in the, in the one-ninety-six account, which is our, uh, state contract account. We have money in there to cover the tractors that do the interstate work. Uh, but the way the garage has it coded, at, at the end of the year, it has to all be, they do it all in the one-ninety, so Karen has to do a transfer of that money.
Okay, so we do have the expenses for this year. We just haven't posted them as of yet.
I see what you're talking about, yeah. Right, it'll, it'll balance out.
Okay, so all those costs are in the one-ninety account then?
But is it, it's in the SSA account?
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other, any other questions on the street department budget?
Is, is there a need for a, another paver? To fix asphalt replacement?
The mayor and I have talked about that. Uh, we're in, uh, into this lawsuit with the sidewalks. And that's for the first couple of three years of that, of that lawsuit, we, we have agreed to go full-time on the sidewalks and let Scott handle any paving that way. I mean, we can do it, but until we get ahead on this, uh... ADA stuff, we, we feel like that we should concentrate on our sidewalk repairs and let Scott bring up the, the rest of it. And then in a couple of years, we'll, we'll look at it.
Did we promise to do so much each year on the ADA lawsuit?
Yeah, Scott, uh, he can give you that.
Scott maintains those records and I think this, this year, I think that working with the city attorney and with, uh, with their attorney with the, through the municipal, uh, risk management, I think they, they've concluded that we've, we've met.
Right.
Uh, th- this year anyway and working toward, uh, meeting their, a map for next year.
We had an agreement some six, seven years ago, right?
But I thought the agreement was that we're gonna do so much each year.
Yeah, we are, we are, we've, and, and Scott, a lot of that has been included in our, in our paving where we go in and reconstruct the sidewalks at the same time we're paving. Others are just, just repairs, so for example, you can drive Highland now and some in East Jackson, Bemis, where a lot of just a slab or two, ten or fifteen feet have been chiseled out and, and re-poured. And, uh, we don't have to build all new sidewalks, we just repair the ones that elevations are issue or cracked and broken up.
I think the mayor has it been within the last year or the last two years when you signed the agreement, I mean, up until that time?
I think it's the last couple of years, yeah, we, I think we've been at two years, this is the first year where we've gone full-time with a crew working with sidewalk repairs all over the city.
How much, how much longer we just take to get caught up on that?
I think it's like eighteen years, but I'm not sure.
Twenty years, I believe.
There were some reporting requirements with that as well.
There are, there's some very stringent, uh, reporting requirements.
I think, I think we're in good shape on the reporting, aren't we, on the ADA?
So we'll have to continue those efforts, though, we can't, we can't just pull crews off and not do any sidewalk repair, we're, we've got to stay with it.
We've got, we've got some good, we've got some good people and we're, our asphalt people and our concrete people are cross-trained. They can do, they can do both, so we've got, like, twelve people that we can put on concrete. Some of them tear it out, set it up, and the crew come on board and just go on by.
I noticed on Old Well where we just made the widening and so forth there at the Regions Bank, we poured all that nice concrete, sidewalk curb and this week they were tearing it up.
They were, that, that was a result of the contractor installing it incorrectly.
Okay.
Us inspecting and then having to redo it.
So it's their, their dollar?
It's their experience.
Okay.
And actually, they, they poured another one second time and it's still the same.
Okay.
And, uh, so we go through that from time to time depending on if your contractor's got new people that not, you know, not up on that, but, but they're covering the problem.
They, they won't be showing up for the change order, will they?
No.
Okay, any other questions, uh, on the Street Department? Kinda got the Street Department divided into two sections now, that's why you have two guys up there.
There is, uh, some capital as.
There's some capital in there, if y'all wanna look at that and if you have any questions on it.
I've got one maintenance truck that Percy uses, one of our, I guess you'd call him a bean bed truck that's used for his maintenance. Pick up in his, when he puts his alleys out that you build with that.
Truck I have is old truck, a lot of miles on it. It's costing, uh, gas mileage, it's old, I think, you know, we had a while, it's about two hundred thousand miles. Getting to get where I think we need another truck, make sure the guys in the truck's safe, like, working. It's just time for it to go to bed. Yeah, that's all I got, was one truck, so I think that went to the most definite need that was there.
In total, it's a hundred and fifteen thousand between the three trucks.
On the street construction side, uh, we're asking for a three-fifty chassis. We've got, we, our patch truck, asphalt pack, potable truck was robbed and wrecked two years ago and it totaled it, but the bed's all right, so we're gonna just ask for the chassis and, and, and use the bed, it's at a savings eight thousand dollars. And then, uh, we've got, uh, a crew cab maintenance truck that is replacing this one, it's got about a hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand miles on it. So I think that'll do us this year.
Okay. Cost for a grain bed, we're gonna be hauling grain for it?
Well, it, it, it has, they just call it, it has the sides on it and the open doors on it where you can haul brush and stuff. I guess it's better called a maintenance truck.
Keep your tools in there too, uh, lock them up, uh, while you're working. And I lock them, so you know, you claw some wheel and back one, maybe get your tools off the truck.
Okay. Council good with the, uh, with Street Department, both off capital, okay, thank you guys, appreciate it.
I guess what's left, Mayor, would be the city garage.
Mm-hmm. Any questions on, uh, on garage operations?
Basically, only a one point eight percent increase.
One point eight, uh, I don't know, I can't find it.
We make any progress over charging off more of the funds out of the garage to departments, or are we still about the same as we were last year?
We talked about it, we're the same place we are. I'm all for changing it, but.
Yeah, let's talk about some more.
Yeah.
And his capital is, uh, I want to explain that, a, uh, truck replacement, uh.
It's a service truck, uh, this one truck that we have is an eighty-seven model, uh, and by some miracle, it's a G M diesel engine they built in the eighties. Most of them didn't make it, this one's still running, I don't know how. But anyway, we service all city vehicles with this one unit and, uh, that, the one we have now is eighty-seven model. But somehow, I don't have that, it just might have just farmed it as.
Okay, any questions in council on garage, garage operations and/or capital budgets?
The only, the only other question I had, Mayor, was on the employee benefits, we're charging some of the salaries to other departments, but evidently not the employee benefits.
It's a calculation, it's based on the work orders that's charged out, so yes, there is a small percentage of benefits that's in those work orders.
Okay, it looks like, uh, you take the salaries and distract what's charged out to other departments, our benefits are a hundred percent of that amount, they're the same.
It doesn't account for everything as far as the workers' work orders or capital.
Okay, thank you, take care.
Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank y'all.
That about wraps up Public Works and we'd be ready for Recreation if we wanted.
Tony, wait.
Okay, welcome, Tom.
Now, when you got teenage grandchildren visiting for the summer, girls like to stay up tall late at night, so. Uh, if I might indulge the mayor and the council, I had two major, uh, superintendents to retire and we had to replace them and I want to introduce you to our two replacements. Uh, we had, uh, Robert Moore to retire from park maintenance and park maintenance really isn't just park maintenance, they do all of the public buildings and close to a hundred something buildings that they keep up. And the new superintendent is Kirk Smith, staying there, Kirk. And then groundskeeping, we had, um, Charles Evans, who was a long-time superintendent, been there thirty-something years. We replaced him with another thirty-something-year man.
Thirty years?
Twenty-five, I'm giving him more years than, it's Frank Woods. I just wanted them to be introduced to you all, uh, they're doing a, a, so far, excellent job and we're very appreciative of, of them. Very appreciative of the council and the mayor for all the support you've given us. Pretty much, our budget has increased just slightly, um, when they talked about two of the employees who had to be made full-time for the Affordable Care Act, two of them are in the groundskeeping department. Uh, there's some slight increases in, uh, the recreation, uh, administration budget, uh, for some salary upgrades. Overall, and then at Bemis Center, which is not actually a center, it is a house in Bemis, we increased the, uh, uh, repair line about twenty thousand because there's a termite problem that we've got to address, uh, there.
Is it, Bemis Community Center, is that owned by the city?
Yes, it's, 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 it's where we have our, we used to have a computer lab there and behind it was another older building where we had our ceramic, uh, department and program. And so once the numbers dropped really, really, really bad at the house in front where the computer lab was, so what we did, we allowed the ceramic people to transition out of there, uh, because when it rained a lot back there, it would flood on occasions. So they are now in the, in the center, uh, with, um, the ceramics and it's, it's a.
That's more a parking rack than a community center, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's a program where they do the ceramics, uh.
The other question I had on that, as I noticed in, over in the donations or, uh, we're also donating fifteen thousand dollars to the Bemis Community Center. So is, is that run by somebody else or is that different, a different organization there or?
That is, um, the old Rosenwall, ro- is that it, Karen, Rosenwall School?
I think they call it Walter Brews.
Walter, Walter Brewer. It's, it used to be the old west.
It's a different.
Yeah, it used to be the old Bemis, West Bemis Baptist Church. And what that, there's a group of people that I met with a couple of years ago, which is a very good noble idea, is that they want to turn that into a smaller community center uh, in honor of, uh, the longtime minister there to do some programming for the kids in that community.
But it's two separate organizations, I saw it in the office, okay.
Yeah, two separate, yes, yes. So if you have any questions about the operating side, those are pretty much what those increases are related to. The capital side, um, of course, there's a lot of things going, let me give you updates on the projects we have going now. The soccer complex, from the perspective of the fields and the sod and the fencing and all, that's completed, but we are carrying also money for some additional things that will have to take place out there, so, so that's, that's pretty much all done on that side as it relates to the bigger issues. The tennis center, the weather keeps cooperating, they've got, uh, about six of the courts concreted and down and it is, if it doesn't rain in much, that should be completed probably before the summer's over. It's going pretty good, that first phase, then we have to do, of course, a restroom there. And you may see on the capital here in Forest Hill, uh, we've, about another week and a half, he'll have that, have that done. In our capital, you'll see that one of the larger items is the, uh, new surface for Gabriel Garden. Uh, that park is, that playground is now about seven years old and the original company that put it in, there are very few companies that do this, it's a company that came out of Canada and when the committee decided to do this, we, we actually made a mistake by doing it in that tuck. We should have had poured in place, which is more expensive. So we've got ends and they've come back under the warranty and repaired it several times, but now it's out of warranty and, and a lot of the ends are folding up. It gets extremely hot and those ends are folding up and kids ru- kids run and play. That park, that playground is used by school systems from Myland. Henderson County has a smaller one, but we have people who make field trips, Crockett County, that come to Gabriel Garden in the spring and summer. And so we're just concerned about some health issues, so what we plan on doing is removing that entire surface and doing a pour-in-place where it's one smooth surface, uh, so that's what that is about. Also, you'll see, of course, the Bemis Memorial Park part is the development of the old, uh, meal site and, you know, hinged upon that guy completing, getting all those bricks down and we're gonna use some of the older bricks and that's with that.
Is that quarter thousand, that pretty much covered the cost of that?
Yes, yes.
We'll have more money next year?
Now, this is pretty much gonna cover the Memorial Park. Once he gets the building down, it's on him.
And once he gets the wall built.
Once the wall built, yes. As you see, the, uh, let me make one thing very clear, we do not have a classroom going in at Cypress Grove for birds. It says classroom for birds, what, what it actually is. Yeah, it's not, it's not for birds, it is a classroom that has been proposed by a partnership, we have a partnership with the Women's Club of, of Jackson and Union University, Friends of Cypress Grove. And they have proposed for a long time having a, a classroom structure where, uh, most, uh, uh, nature centers have a class where research is done and so Union is going to utilize it from their perspective with students who come out, look at some of the plants. We have a lot of variety of plants out there, uh, wildlife, and they're gonna do some research and study within the classroom. But also, it's gonna be open to the public from the perspective, we have field trips out there every week in the spring and summer of groups. And so what we're going to allow them to do is, we'll utilize that classroom for some science projects that local school students, elementary and middle school and high school kids are involved with. Uh, also, we're gonna do workshops and lectures about certain foliage and animals out there and so that's going to be, uh, uh, a, a, a well worthwhile, wild activity. If you go to TripAdvisor, Cypress Grove, Cypress Grove is the second most visited point in Jackson. This is no lie. There are people who come there from foreign countries, uh, when they're in this country, to visit Cypress Grove. It has a unique, uh, ecosystem there, so, uh, that's to be commended. Uh, we're gonna do some work on our bird cages, there's some deterioration taking place there. The other large item you might see is, um, uh, gazebo at Liba- Liberty Garden, we worked with a partnership with the group at Liberty Garden, the neighborhood group, that really helped put that concept together and that's a very unique and special park that a lot of people, uh, utilize for weddings and, uh, we've got that memorial, military memorial garden, so it's, it's a very, very good, good park.
Is there another gazebo already there?
That's the small gazebo up front, this one's going in the back where we have an area for, 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 for children and et cetera. It's gonna be a, a much larger gazebo.
Back to Cypress Garden, that building, will it be freestanding or is it gonna?
It, it will be freestanding, we were gonna put it in the back, but to put it behind where it was originally planned means you would have to cut a road in and when it rains, it could wash out, it would, it, it would cost astronomically. So we have had the architect to look at moving in and when you're facing the front of it, it will be on the right between that small gazebo we have and the main walk interest up and, uh, it's gonna be really, really a nice addition to that. Uh, park main, uh, park maintenance has requested a cargo van, uh, Kirk has what we call a recovery system that utilizes freon for the different buildings and some other equipment and tools can be stored in it so that it's not exposed and somebody can steal it, so it, it will be utilized for that. And that's pretty much, uh, what we have taken place.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, sir.
People that have taken off the duty and, and there are a lot of people that even been at the Cypress Grove. You go out there, there's more things going on than you ever seen around. And Tony in his room, you're an excellent job in all phases of their recreation and all that stuff, didn't you?
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, any questions, uh, Tony, parking rec?
Just give me an update on the graffiti. Trust me, there's not any gangs, it's this one guy and we've got his name, but you gotta catch him in the act. So we're gonna make a great, cause them dollar signs, that's his trademark and he'll write some gang graffiti, but it's really, this, this one guy and we're gonna.
This is North Fork.
If I had to, if I had to sleep out there in Park, I'm gonna catch that joker. So, but we would immediately paint over it and take care of it, so we don't want people seeing all that kinda stuff.
Tony, uh, the park about Muse Park, Toe Bailey Field.
Toe Bailey Field, yeah, what we've got going on, which is very, I'm glad you mentioned that, for years, we've been running the Gilliam League down at, uh,
Washington, years.
East Chester, but now, uh, at twelve, they would stop playing. But now we have developed a league for thirteen to sixteen-year-olds, they're playing every Wednesday now at Toe Bailey. We've built another mound and moved in and, and, and we're very glad and appreciative and we're gonna, if, if the league grows and builds, we're gonna make an investment. We've replaced, we're gonna replace some lights that needed, lights replaced, you know, the old, some ceiling falling in where we keep the scoreboard and stuff. So what we plan on doing is really building that, that age group up, cause that's an age group that really needs something doing. We've got about four teams that started this, this league, new league now, and we got sponsors that are pretty much funding it. We, uh, out of T R R budget, we did buy some pants for the, for the group, but we've got sponsors. But we've got sponsors for the jerseys and things. So, hopefully, that will grow and that will be utilized. Lane utilizes it for their league, but it's, it's not really college with, it's got a short porch, as they call it. But they play there and the S I E C has approved that it's okay, but it's a short porch. But they hadn't knocked out many home runs. That's what, you know, I've watched them a couple of times and it, you know. Uh, but we have talked with them and asked them about utilizing, uh, Muse Park Field. Uh, and we're in the process, we, we'd have to build a mound for them, but it has no grass on the infield, cause it's been mostly softball play there.
It's the bathroom and everything, they all was up to par and everything?
Whether that at Toe.
Yeah, they said something about plumbing.
No, we, what we've done, we've, we've put, we always put a portable bathroom out there for them to use. Uh, so it's good that it's beginning to be used. We want them to use it.
Thank you.
Yes.
One, one other question, Tony. We've got a tennis center and a tennis complex. The tennis center, is that Highland or not, uh, Scott County or Paul?
Tennis center is over at Westwood. Basically, the tennis center is though two indoor courts.
Okay.
Westwood Garden?
Next to Westwood Garden. We call it the tennis center.
The tennis complex and the new one.
It's one out at the old golf course.
The expenses we got proposed by for, for twenty sixteen on that, is that what we anticipated it could be each year from here on out? Or is that a small percentage of what it'll be? Cause it's going to be up and running or?
Yeah, it's a small percentage right now, but that's initially what we'll need. We'll have a part-time person out there to do, keep maintenance. It's going to have bathrooms and et cetera. So, uh, uh, we don't want it to, you know, not get, you know.
When it's fully up and running, it's going to be, it'll be higher than that.
Okay, any, thank you, Tony. Any other questions for Tony, please?
Again, thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Tony.
Basically down into public buildings.
Public building. Uh, Perry, why don't we, I'll get you first. Uh, Perry, a civic center in Omen Arena.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fundamentally, our budgets are a repeat of last year with, with no increase. And we've got a few capital, uh, requests. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If they remain up to code. Miss America, uh, Miss Tennessee, everything went well?
Uh, yes.
And I noticed in your capital request, the speaker system and sound system at Omen, you replaced it. Is that right?
Yeah, there's a request for Omen, uh, simply to replace the speakers that are the existing speakers that are up there or blown out. It would just be replacing those, those speakers. So, you would have a public address system for events or for, you know, anything that goes on there.
Good.
That's pretty much the bare minimum. It would be a sound system. It would just be a, a public address.
Okay.
Then, um, for the civic center, uh, a lot of this is replacement items. Um, the projectors and the projector screens is something we've had a lot of requests for when people rent the, uh, facility for training purposes. Uh, they can actually be income-producing assets, cause we can rent these out when people, uh, come to do training there. The, um, sprinkler monitoring system would be something, it would be, uh, an addition. It would be a, a system that would notify the fire department should the sprinkler system, uh, engage, whether it be from a mechanical failure or some random fire in the back of the building. And it would prevent the, uh, lower level of the building from flooding, basically, if the sprinkler system, you know, if it did engage for whatever reason. The stage curtains, there's, fortunately, there's not too many of, not, we're in better shape than we were last year. There's a few that are literally falling. I think they've been renting them, uh, for different events. And the, uh, the light control system is a, it's up in the balcony and it's what they use. The board that they have now is, uh, has intermittent problems. It comes on and goes off. So, primarily, a lot of times the people, uh, say Chris Bennett's production staff, they have their own. They ring up there. But when someone else comes in, we don't have a board that they can use. So, they have to, to bring their own in. And that's, that number, we'll do a little research on that. I'm not sure. It's primarily probably going to be a laptop and some software. The outdoor lights, there's actually some outdoor lights there. They don't work and, uh, they've been run over for a while, but that'll primarily be to eliminate the exterior of the building. And, uh, much akin to what this building is at nighttime, but, you know, we can even do different colors. I think that would, uh-
Those are kind of ground mounted and they've hit them with lawn mowers and blew them up with weed eaters and all kinds of stuff.
I think if, if we're able to do this, we would probably mount them, uh, five or six feet above the ground on the wall itself. So, they would be out of harms way for, you know, any type of maintenance activities. The booth drape, we have had numerous requests for black drapes. Uh, the blue ones have been there for a long time. And I suspect they will still be utilized from time to time. People are renting a lot of black drape and bringing it in. I think we can increase our marginal, marginally increase our rental rate on the, uh, black drape. There will be a lot of people happy to see that. And last but not least would be a replacement television for the, uh, Miss Tennessee wet bar green room area. It would be an amenity. A lot of people rent a TV to bring in there. So, we could theoretically charge a small price for it. And we could also utilize it for, uh, training purposes. If a small group, say, fifteen or twenty wanted to have a meeting, they could, uh, connect their laptop to it and use it as a screen.
Um, okay, any, any questions on, uh, hey, did y'all talk about operations? Any operation budget, Perry, at all? For the operations?
I'd like to thank Perry for keeping up with the, the new sign, digital plan that we have at Omen Arena. It is, is, is great. The community loves it and all the events you put, not only for Omen Arena, but throughout the city.
We, we finally got, uh, the ability to remotely control that one from the civic center. So, for a while there, we were shuttling back and forth and, uh, it doesn't sound like a lot, but you, you'll, you'll burn an hour plus just simply going over there and going through the mechanics of it too. But we're in a lot better shape on that now.
Perry, you say that, uh, for Omen, um, you've asked for a public address system. That, and that's not a, a, a complete sound system for the entire building. Uh, how old is Omen Arena?
It was constructed, it was constructed, what, sixty-eight, sixty-nine? Okay. And, and, and Perry, what's our future for, for Omen?
Well, we've been able to, just within the past two years, at one time, we talked to individuals or, uh, firms about simply leasing the arena, have them lease it and let them program it and bring productions in. And we got absolutely nowhere on that. We've been able to, by very carefully and very diligently, make sure that we control the, uh, the heating and air in the room. Because that has basically been the, the primary charge. Hundred and twenty thousand a year, uh, a mower, uh, usually twelve thousand a month before we really got into watching, watching the utilities, cutting off the lamp, cutting off the lights at night, cutting off the air conditioners, using floor fans. And so, we've been able to pull the utilities back considerably. Uh, Perry, what, what do you think? Maybe at least thirty percent, uh, from what we were paying before in some cases, depending on the time of year. And that's a, that's a mammoth cost and, uh-
He's budgeting a hundred thousand dollars now.
Yes, okay. And, uh, still, still being able to bring that down. So, I, I think the future for Omen Arena, and we've seen a new way in which that particular venue is being used now. And it appears for more formal events than we've ever seen in there. And, and really, the building dresses up very, very well. Once people, people take just a little bit of time and effort to, um, to dress up the, the boundaries of, of the court itself and set tables and white tablecloths. And it's amazing what, how the building has transformed.
So, we're going to hang in there for?
We're going to hang in there for a while with Omen. Uh, still, once you get inside the building, it still have the motif of, you know, it is what it is. But once you get inside, you, you can see that the building is well, is well done and well maintained.
No, thank you.
And from the revenue side, um, Perry, what, what are we charging the school system now for?
It's a, uh, I think the gen- general concept there was a function of the utilities, like about half the utility bill. So, it would, um, it would, as my understanding, it would vary with the utilities. I would say around fifty thousand.
Do, do high schools still use that?
Oh, yes.
Madison, I know does.
They do. And, and some other high schools, um, uh, J C M is used. They have their tournament there.
Large games last year.
Lane plays a game or two there and-
Lane College.
There's, uh-
On the P A system.
Northside R O T C, uh, has their, much like a West Tennessee event with quite a few people there. Um, so, uh, Madison had a chess tournament there.
Okay.
So, it, it gets used quite busy by the school system.
Oh, your, uh, P A system here. I mean, I see what you got. I think we need to put a good quality sound, and not just major sound system, but, I mean, when you put, you're talking about seventeen hundred dollars for a facility like that. I think level year or two, you're going to be spending more money. I mean, I think you need to put a little, some, put more quality in there. Cause a lot of people, when they do, Perry, they have, dance groups is going to pay, play music through summer.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, you spend it. I mean, I DJ a little bit. I spent more than that. I ain't got that much money for a sound system.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm all for that. This was-
I understand they don't major money, but speaking hundred dollars is not good quality speakers that are going to be hung up there. It's not going to last long at all.
Yeah, these were, these were just the, uh, not really high quality or fidelity music sound, more of a, a public address or announcer for a sporting event or, uh, this is just a start.
Then too, the acoustics of, of the building are, you know, so, I mean, you could put a really good sound system. And I think, you know, just that's a function of, yeah, it is what it is.
Okay, any other, any other questions, Perry? Uh, uh, Karen, you may have to answer this, girl. We still are getting, uh, revenue from the state as far as use of the civic center parking lot?
Yes, we are.
Do you know offhand?
Uh, I believe it's four thousand dollars a month, we get off.
Okay, okay. And that is drifted over into revenue for the civic center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, you have a question? Okay, thank you, Perry.
Certainly, thank you.
Um, let's see, Diane, you here? And the N A D, there she is. The N A D, it looked like there was about a six point ten percent increase. And I think some of that was probably being transferred of an employee, um, that's been a long-term employee of the city. And obviously, she came in at a higher rate of pay than what was there before.
Correct.
Any question, Diane, as far as her operating budget? She now has an advisory, uh, committee, uh, advisory board, which is appointed by this, uh, this council. They seem to be very active and I will commend them for their time that they give to the N A D. Uh, they're very, uh, very aggressively marketing the N A D and marketing season tickets and doing what they do.
Yes, they are.
Any question? You got, you, look at your capital then.
Capital is, um-
The capital is for the, um, theater walls and floors to, and as well as the gallery and the dressing rooms to be painted and mended. The, uh, maintenance department has fixed the cracks in the ceilings and the walls several numerous times and they keep coming back. But, uh, I've been there since two thousand and the theater gallery and hallways have not been painted in that amount of time. Um, so, it's beginning to show we're in tear. We, the auditorium is used almost constantly. Um, it's rarely black. So, it's beginning to need a little bit of help.
Any questions, uh, then as far as the capital for the N A D? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
That's it. Thank you.
I guess the fairgrounds would be the next major one.
Okay, fairgrounds. And then I think the only one we'll like would be Kathleen before we get into the ordinances and, uh, tax rights. John Roberts? Look at your fairgrounds, that's your fairgrounds budget, um, um, also, uh, capital. If you have any questions, John Roberts is here to try to answer those questions for you.
On your capital, you're remodeling your restroom facilities. Are you just updating or moving or what are you doing?
We're going to spruce them up, make them look a lot better. We pride ourselves on very clean facility and, and the towel that's there, no matter what you do, wax, buff the floors, it's just got that dingy look about it. And, um, so, we're going to go in and actually do our, do the work, most of it ourselves. Hopefully, go in, pull some of those towels up and hopefully, we can scrape some of that glue. I'd like to stain, just stain that existing concrete and roll it with some type of an epoxy and just paint the walls and just give it a more modern look, make it look more so pleasing.
Got all your lights up on, on your buildings down there?
Yes, sir.
Are you strip lighting? Looks very good.
They look good, look really good. Actually, they act as almost kind of a security light. Those LEDs are so bright. Um, when you go out there, and I was out there, uh, the other night, and you look, it's probably a twenty or thirty foot, you know, section that those LEDs are so bright that it casts it way out there, almost to the pavement. So, um, looks really good.
Okay. Okay, question, Ray?
Your revenues year-to-date are actually more than your budget for last year, more than this budget? Are we just being on the safe side there on the revenues, keeping it same as last year?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate anything's happening in the current year that maybe won't happen next year or?
I do not, actually. We've got more that's, um, more that's coming in. I've got a, an event at, uh, Tennessee Good Sam's, come here with the Good Sam's, a big R V, uh, event. They're going to come in in the fall and, um, should do really well off of that event. So, I kind of kept everything just the same, just to be on the conservative side. But, yeah, we're very busy.
Okay, on the, on the, uh, any, any question on operating? Uh, there's not a great deal of difference there. How about capital, uh, other than the restrooms? We've, we've gone there. Okay, John Roberts, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Miss Hanka, Hanka will be dealing with the health and sanitation department, um-
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
Morning, Kathleen. Still trying to find you, Kathleen. Perry's anywhere.
She's got her own little section. Because she is a special revenue fund. It's, uh, towards the back. Kathleen, you want to just take them through the, uh, revenues that total up to twelve million nine sixteen?
Uh, state res- recycling grant is something, it's a rebate we get for the recycling that we do. And the state determines how much of that we, we are eligible for every year. And, uh, we apply for that. And then we receive, uh, host fees for the landfill. Uh, the garbage collection revenue is self, self-explanatory, I think. The reset fee is whenever a dumpster is pulled from a business for whatever reason. They have to, uh, apply, um, they have to pay a reset fee to get that put back. It's usually for non-payment. It's like fifty dollars. And then they, that, but that's where that, what that is. Penalties for garbage or when a business does not pay their dumpster fee on time.
The revenues basically have not changed, um- The revenues basically have not changed, um, because we don't see that many adds or deletes as far as commercial dumpsters and roll-offs. And some of the commercial, um, places of business are doing more in recycling, which does take away from our billing, our hauling, our dumping, but that's also a good thing. It's in her expenses where, uh, basically we're seeing some savings, uh, in previous years. Uh, the fuel surcharge last year, we had budgeted six hundred thousand. So far, year-to-date, we're only at a hundred seventy-eight thousand, so we lowered that to three hundred thousand. And that's anybody's guess on the price of diesel that's over...
Two dollars and seventy-one cents.
For gallon. But it, I mean, there were some months when we ran twelve, fifteen thousand dollars in, uh, fuel surcharge, where now we're running three, four thousand dollars.
There were some months where we ran forty to forty-five thousand dollars in fuel surcharge. But we are allowing money to be put in the budget because we know that the fuel will go up.
And the main thing, uh, that I would like to address, and Sam can add to, previously, the state allowed us, because it's a special revenue fund, standalone fund, but they don't have personnel, they don't have accounting, they don't have, uh, city recorder, they don't have risk management. So they're really not a standalone operation. They have overheads that were in the general fund, so that we were able to transfer funds from Health and Sanitation to the general fund. Now, the policy is that we have to actually bill from the general fund to Health and Sanitation. And you notice we show a number there of seven hundred thousand that we're estimating. And, uh, Sam could elaborate on that. He and Wanda have set up a, uh, spreadsheet that captures all the charges. For example, I've spent several weeks this year, uh, helping Kathleen out on price negotiations with Allied BFI, and, um, also with, uh, certain commercial accounts who felt they weren't getting their fair share of charges on open tops, and because of their product, which was light, uh, and filled up a trailer versus J E A filling up a trailer with tons of sludge. So, uh, that's just one example where we, in administration, and Karen receipts all of their funds, that, uh, the billings from J E A and from commercial. So we should be able to justifiably, and we've talked to A T A about this, bill Health and Sanitation for the administration services we provide, because they are not a standalone business. But that's what the seven hundred thousand dollars is.
Al, uh, before, before we were directed by the Comp Trailer's Office and by the state that we could not, could not any longer utilize any surplus from H and S. And we were making those transfers to the general fund. How much was that roughly?
We had gone up to like a million five.
Okay. So you look at that, uh, Council, then that's another million that, that is no longer available in the general fund, because we've been, been directed by the Comp Trailer General, um, that it had to stay within Health and Sanitation, within that special fund. And we've been able, through this accounting process, to get some of it back into the general fund because of our assistance to Kathleen. But it's, it's a little small items like that, small. A million dollars is not small, but, but still have the money, but it's not in the general fund.
Mayor, that'd be one area that we really should look at, billing all of the, uh, garage expenses to them for repairs and maintenance. Make sure we do bill a hundred percent of that.
We talked about that. We're gonna be, Sam's gonna be looking at that as one of his key items. The garage and, uh, all of the revenue department that receipts all of the, uh, monies, the collections, uh, that we up in the Recorder's Office help out with. Uh, just a number of things that a business would need, personnel, risk management, you know, et cetera.
Insurance.
Ronnie, what are you doing now?
Well, I'm just trying to stir the water.
Okay.
The surcharge we're paying to those guys, there's no reason, and I know of anyway, that we could not handle their fuel. And we're paying, uh, we bought a load of diesel yesterday for a dollar ninety-two. It'd be a simple matter of adding a monitoring system to their system, and we could bill them through our department very easily. And it's a dollar ninety-two, close to what you said, two seventy-nine, Kathleen?
Seventy-one, two seventy-one.
Well, that's what waste management charges is. We'd have to provide waste management.
We're hopeful on a new contract, they'll no longer have diesel trucks, so I'll have C and G trucks, and we'll be paying no surcharge. Right, Councilman Brooks? All right.
Yeah, when do we, we negotiate? Next year?
Uh, when?
The new contract will go into effect July, July one of twenty sixteen. So we will be putting R F P together to get out this fall. We'll have to make a decision six months prior to, to July one.
And if we look at the, the amount we bill residential also here, I'd assume we'll look at that also after we negotiate a new contract, see what we need to continue to charge residents.
Yes.
Yeah, we evaluate, but we try not to change each year what we charge, uh, the residents or the commercial. It becomes so confusing, up, down, up, down, up, down. So we try and go three to five years.
Plus, it helps in budgeting it for businesses. They, they are, they need to know several years down, down the road how much they're gonna be charged.
Okay, any, any, uh, questions from Council on H and S budget, either operating, capital?
Not to interrupt you, Mayor, but Kathleen's capital is not shown on here, because she's a standalone fund. You might go over with that.
I've, I have requested...
It is in their books, though. It's at the end of her fund.
Requested, um, money for a new claw truck. The, we, our spare claw truck, which is a two thousand model, obviously is, is old, but it's still, it's still in there. We had bought two of those in two thousand, and one of them we converted to, uh, a truck that we service our recycling containers. The other one we are, we have out on the road, especially this time of year. We're hoping to actually make that one a spare. And then a couple of years ago, H and S inherited the, the street sweepers, and they are really in disrepair, and we need two new street sweepers, as also we need a new lawnmower. Cause we still continue to maintain three hundred plus lots that we've inherited for one reason or the other, as well as we do take care of the building department when they ask us to mow lots that property owners are not mowing.
Sure you don't need two more claw trucks?
Probably do, yes. I, I need sweepers as well, though.
You know what, we, before we draw the specs up on the sweepers, I, I'm going to indicate to Kathleen and the purchasing to, to at least look at, um, at a, at a vendor to, to bid that and leave that in, in a third party's hand. I'm not for sure we'll come out any better financially, and I guess that will be the key to it. Is it going to be cheaper us to bid that out to, to another vendor, or continue to do it ourselves? And, and we'd like to at least look at that. Uh, not too worried about the employees who are in the, who are now operating the sweepers, because we have plenty of vehicles for them to use. Uh, they're not going anywhere. Uh, so we may, we may look at that, uh, between now and the time we get ready to order new sweepers, and just see what that cost would be.
We are reimbursed from the state for the, uh, the road, the state routes that we sweep. And so that, that money does not go into H and S, it goes back into the street department. But, but our employees are the ones who actually do the work. I am in, I am getting, gaining seven full-time employees as, as a result of the Affordable Air, uh, Affordable Care Act, um, and so there will be some expense involved there. But, uh, I'm, I feel very good about the employees we have gained.
And they've worked with you for a number of years, probably not, so it's not like we're hiring new people. It's just picking up a few more hours and paying them their fringe benefits, which I think is the right thing to do.
And then in the fall, when we go into leaf season, groundskeeping lets us borrow some of their temporary, uh, employees from the summer, and we use them on our leaf machines during leaf season. And I say, we, we really don't have a leaf season. Whenever people ask, when is the leaf season over? It's really never over. We will operate as long as the people are calling about loose leaves.
Okay, any, uh, any other questions on Health and Sanitation, the operating budget, or the capital budget? Okay, thank you, Kathleen. Um, Al, I think, and you may have to help handle this, you probably know more about their operation than anyone. We've got, uh, Lynette coming in, but I think the Sports Flex is the...
The Sports Flex is the one...
Oh, Rick's here, yeah, here he is, here he is. Yeah, he's back there in the back. He's back in timeout. Back there in timeout.
Had my shorts on today, Mayor.
That's all right.
He called pretty quick.
Not a bad idea, anyway.
Uh, a hundred, a hundred and ten, uh, heat index, that's true, that's true. Um, I think everybody has the, the, uh, our particular budget. If there are any questions at that point, I also wanted to give out, and I'll go ahead and do that now, the, uh, what I've put together is a five-year capital plan. One of the things I did was looking at it, uh, making sure with, uh, possibility of, of some of our, uh, revenue streams, uh, changing next year after next year. Uh, and so I've reduced those particular areas. I would say with what you're about to get, I would like to add some things for us to continue to stay up and above.
Parking lot?
Parking lot. That is...
I have never seen anything like it this past weekend. People were parking all the way over, uh, to the Holiday Inn Express. How many teams do we have this weekend?
We had seventy-six this weekend, but it was a state tournament, which means you get a lot more people to come out. And, uh, we've been, we've been grateful to Regional letting us use their front and their back parking lots. And of course, that is a good problem to have, uh...
I illegally parked this past week.
No, you didn't.
Yeah.
Okay. So, let me give you these first, then I'll answer questions.
I think that's a, that's a good question that Councilman Dodd asked. Do we have any available parking? I guess the question, the answer is no, for additional parking if we, if we decided that...
The only place, Mayor, that I know of that we could park would be under one of those, or around one of those towers over at the D complex, which is next to Pringles, uh, to the ballpark, um, and...
Electrical towers, I mean...
The T V A towers, or whoever they are, um, you know, because we, we're around those anyway in some of the parking lots. But we could probably park there. I'm saying that couldn't be over, we, at one time checked, I think it was more like forty or fifty.
What about between A and B complex?
Between...
There's a big grassy area there between them.
Yep, zero in a little bit further on there, A and B. We have our major parking lot, our front parking lot, which way would be...
Back toward the fields. It's fenced out right now.
Yeah, it might be. I'm, I'm not sure how we would get to that. I, I, I can, I can look at that, but the only one that we've really looked at with any possibility is that particular area around the, around that. Now, we do have a, uh, an agreement with Skyzone, where they park in ours if there's overflow, and they've had that, especially during the week, if they have groups that come in. And then we, uh, use it for overflow if they're not busy. So it's kind of a, we have a exit entrance there that both can use. And so it's a, as I say, it's a very, very good problem. Um, other than that particular area, we, we don't have any additional land out there. So... Any, any questions on the budget? Again, you've seen the, the capital plan. Uh, we have, uh, just, uh, four items for sixteen. But again, we've taken this, uh, five-year plan and really reduced it, because again, we want to make sure that, uh, the money's there for, for, uh, being able to do that. The, the sixteen, F Y sixteen, uh, is on a loan plan that will complete that, Al, at that point, that's correct. That, that particular loan, and that will complete spending of that, that loan.
Well, to make a long story short, we're at a very critical point, and I'm being, Ricky and I are being very honest with ourselves and with you. We basically had ten-year sponsorships, big dollar sponsorships, a million and a half, uh, from West Tennessee Healthcare on naming rights, uh, five hundred and some odd thousand dollars over, these are all over ten years, uh, from Bancor South, and, uh, for the naming of Bancor South Parkway. And then we had, uh, fifty thousand dollars a year, plus all the scoreboards from Coke, uh, based on the assumption we would consume a hundred and two thousand twenty-ounce bottle cases. We have not, as a total city, consumed that much, so there's gonna be a void there. We still have, uh, a couple of years of debt in the, uh, capital outlay notes to Bancor South. So the next couple of years, uh, we're out there beating the bushes, as the mayor knows. We've already gone to West Tennessee Healthcare and asked for a, uh, renewal of their sponsorship, cause it's not known as the Jackson Sports Flex, it's known as the West Tennessee Healthcare Sports Flex. Uh, and they, they get a benefit from it, and they have been very pleased with that. Uh, the point that I'm trying to make is, and I'll show you here on the, this chart, I haven't really updated, but, uh, we started out with, uh, nine million dollars in debt, uh, out of the thirteen and a half million dollars that it cost to build the Sports Flex. Uh, this has not been updated for F Y fifteen, but at the end of F Y fourteen, we had that down to, uh, three million nine something, if my eyes are right, and I'm sorry, uh, right up here. And this shows that we owed the, uh, we had a small two hundred fifty thousand dollar note to the general fund where we had borrowed money. That's now been paid down to thirty-one thousand. It's due by August thirty-first, and we will have paid that off. And then we took out five hundred thousand dollars in additional capital outlay note for the capital projects that Ricky has been talking about. Uh, we've made tremendous results over a ten-year period to come from nine million to four million. And the story is, can be told, we talked about it before. Hotel motel tax started out in, um, that's the excess over the base rate, uh, that was in the pot of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. We started out here at three hundred and ten thousand, all the way up to four hundred and eighty-one thousand. This year, we actually received over five hundred thousand. But what really has benefited us is the local option sales tax recovery on those businesses that started up out there, basically because of the Sports Flex, the Sonic, the McDonald's, the food store, all of the, uh, little restaurants, uh, the Holiday Inn Express. That was all in a district where the local option agreement with the county allowed us to recover those, uh, sales tax expenses. Well, really, in this case of sales tax, the county, uh, didn't have anything to do with that, because that was out of their district. But the state, we passed legislation that allowed us to, uh, recover those dollars. So we still have good, tremendous input coming. Every time they put a new store, a new filling station, a new whatever out there at, uh, exit eighty-five, the Sports Flex benefits from that. And we will have the majority of the debt paid off in the next two to three years. Uh, but right now, these next two to three years, there's no one out there giving fifty or a hundred thousand dollar sponsorships. Believe me, those days are gone, and, uh, Mr. Conger can probably attest to that when he was with West Tennessee Healthcare. It's, it's difficult to get people, especially when you've been successful. Uh, people ask why. Many people did this not so much for advertising, Coke and Bancor South and West Tennessee Healthcare, but as a community effort, because they knew how successful travel baseball would be. But now that we're successful, it's hard to talk people into continuing that. And what we also need to realize is that the Sportsplex, about forty-seven percent of the time, is not used for travel ball, it's used for a park. Monday, Thursday, Friday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, you have all the Dixie youth playing out there. Little League, and then you also have men's softball. And we're basically not charging the county or these leagues for that. We're providing a park effort, which we do bill Tony about what, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a year, but that's a small token as to what it really costs us to operate the Sportsplex as a park. It's been very successful. We've got a couple of tough years ahead of us because some of these sponsorships are dropping off. But we will still continue to get the sales tax recovery. And the more that's built out there, the more we can talk Gary Taylor into diverting some of his van drive columns development out to Exit Eighty-Five, the more successful we'll be. But when you look at some of these, one weekend, two or three weeks ago, the ballpark, the Jackson Generals drew six, drew six thousand eight hundred people. Ricky had over a hundred.
Hundred and four teams.
Hundred and four teams. People actually had to park down at that regional hospital administrative center. They were, they parked there and walked, I guess it would be a good three-quarters of a mile up to the ballpark to see the Jackson Generals play. And those people had to eat somewhere, they had to sleep somewhere. And as Lori would tell you, this is the number one, Exit Eighty-Five is the number one tourism draw.
Al, when does the, I'm sorry. When does the, the hotel motel tax, isn't there a run-out date on that?
December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen.
So it's coming up?
Yes, it's coming up too.
So y'all just can lose that? Is that something that we can re-estigate or?
Well, Ricky and I wanted to talk to the mayor about, and we have talked to some people. We have a tax distribution committee that's made up of three from the county and three from the city. I think the CEDC, and Mayor, you correct me if I'm wrong, they're counting the days till they get their share of that money back. But the county.
Hotel motel tax.
Hotel motel. But since the county continues to use this as a park, I think they may be willing, maybe, to work out a little extension. We're hoping so anyway.
Okay, well, maybe quit your arm till we start charging them for it.
Or maybe a percentage of what they're, either, either way.
How about the sales tax? Does it run out period of time also?
No, thirty years.
Thirty years.
So we've got.
Or whenever the Sportsplex is paid off.
As long as you have debt, and we'll make sure we have debt, even if it's just building a fence.
Till debt is gone or thirty years, whichever comes first.
Yes.
And that's over this year, last year was six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
What's that, sir?
So ten years, how long has the Sportsplex been there?
We'll start our tenth year next year.
Okay, so you got twenty years left, that's what you're saying?
But like anything else, those fields, those seventeen fields, will someday have to be replaced, just like the field at the ballpark was replaced.
Well, and we, we've been starting a sort of a process at that too, Councilman Wallace, as far as trying to fix some things. Netting has been up for now nine years. Usually netting lasts, netting usually lasts anywhere from six to seven years. And we've been able to patch and do some other things within safety situation. But we've, we've got a plan to begin to start working down on some of those areas too.
Well, the only thing I'm pointing out is the fact that not only we got these other revenues replaced, but we're gonna be losing our sales tax, our hotel motel tax possibly too.
And, and we realize that, we're addressing it. And you see in Ricky's capital plan, he's only putting on their items of necessity. Now, if you want to look at our competition in South Haven and Game Day in Memphis, they no longer expect people to sit on bleachers. They've put stadium seating in, they've put.
Covers.
Covers for people for shade.
Shade covers.
You get old like myself, it's hard to sit on those bleachers. And so someday, we're gonna have to look at that, but after we've paid off our existing debt.
Okay, counsel, any, any questions of Ricky or Al on, on the Sportsplex? Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Just to go quickly, Mayor, through the other funds, the police drug fund and the metro drug fund are basically self-sustaining. The CRA fund basically is just pass-through money where HUD pays us and we pay, pay them back on the HUD, the three million two hundred thousand dollar loan. Community development is Dave Ralston's five-year plan that he turns in. It's hard for us and you as a council to relate to his programs in the CDBG area, but he does a good job. And Dave will be retiring the thirtieth, I believe, and Latoya will be his replacement. But basically, those are funds that we, as a city, you even as a city council, are only approving those. They're really run under Jackson Housing Authority. We already talked about the debt service, the payments thereof, the principal and interest, and the capital outlay funds. Everybody addressed what they were spending. And health and sanitation Kathleen went over. So I'm not trying to rush us through, but I think we have covered basically all of the funds and are ready to look at a motion, if one is forthcoming, on the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen budget, general fund budget. And then the next item would be the tax rate ordinance.
Okay, counsel, ready to do that? If we are, then I need to go ahead and open a public hearing. This is, this is an ordinance on first reading, it'd be the tax ordinance. And ask, is anybody here who would like to be heard on this matter, either in support of or opposition to, pass this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we're open for a motion to approve ordinance on first reading.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a motion I would like to put in on the budget for the agencies we've been supporting. I would like to put Jacola back in with what amount, I think it's nineteen thousand dollars, that we supplied them with last year.
I'll second that.
That, that funding come from the fund balance? Is that, is that, so we'll know where to take it from?
Yes, it would. We, we moved, remember the nineteen thousand from Jacola? We moved to the Dream Center.
Yeah.
I mean, to the Westwood.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second to, to reinstate the, what's the amount again, Councilman?
Nineteen thousand forty-eight dollars and something, whatever it was last year.
Okay, the motion made and seconded. Any discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, we have that, that item to, to add to second reading on, on our budget.
Karen's gonna add, put on this same add-to sheet where I forgot to tell her about the twenty-five thousand on the Humane Society and et cetera on that appropriation sheet.
Okay, okay.
So there'll be at least three or four items on there.
Okay, all right. Okay, we've had, we've, do we have a, do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion second with one, one addition and with the items that Al has mentioned. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the last item, Mayor, would be to address the ordinance. It says to amend the.
On the tax rate?
Tax rate.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. See if there's anyone present who'd like to be heard on this ordinance on first reading as to the tax rate.
And it's not being amended in total, it's one point nine six one nine. It's just we had to change slightly the percentage that goes to the sinking fund, the debt service versus the general fund. And if you remember from my pie chart, that was just a fraction. It's basically eighty-twenty.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Let me close, let me close the public hearing. Hearing now, public hearing is now declared closed and is there a motion? There is a motion, second. Second, discussion with counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Make a motion, we adjourn. Should I make a motion, we adjourn, is that where we are?
There being no other item on the agenda, the meeting is now adjourned.